School District, Board of Trustees, April 7th, 2022, beginning at 7:10 PM. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public and we welcome everyone and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by the security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mrs. Fowler in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid any disruptions to those that are around you. And now if you would please, join me in a moment of silence. So, the first thing on our agenda is our program and presentation, which will be a student performance by Arlington ISD High School Theater Department, UIL one-act play. Mrs. Foster?
President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, we are thrilled tonight to have Arlington High School Theater joining us right up here. As they get settled in, I'll give you a little bit of their background and great work and what they're going to share with us tonight. They are going to present a scene from their UIL one-act play called "Over the River and Through the Woods" by Joe Petitro. This past Friday, the Colt Theater cast and crew competed in the area one-act play contest, and they took second place, advancing them to the regionals. And collectively, their department has gathered a multitude of individual awards, all winners here, including three outstanding tech awards, four honorable mention acting awards, six All-Star Cast Acting Awards, and two Best Performer Acting Awards. That's a lot of awards. It's been five years since the Colt Theater has advanced to the UIL regionals. And for many of these seniors, this is going to be their last high school performance. And it does to them, it represents a lot more than just a contest, but it's an opportunity to share incredible narrative of family, faith, and of course, food in this play. Just as a major theme suggests from this play, nothing lasts forever, so it's important to cherish those moments that matter. Arlington High School Theater.
Hello, my name is John Estes. I'm a senior this year and my character is eighty years old.
My name is Jordan Lage. I'm a junior and I'm playing seventy-year-old.
I'm Michael Verlins. I'm a sophomore this year and I'm also around seventy.
Hi, my name's Jaden Carrier. I'm a senior. My character is thirty.
Hi, I'm Kennedy Hopkins. I'm a senior this year and I'll be playing a seventy-year-old woman.
And also here with us today, we have the rest of our wonderful one-act company.
Hi, my name is Hannah Hellston and I'm offstage lights. I'm a senior this year.
Hi, my name's Samuel Morales. I'm a senior this year and I also do offstage lights.
My name is Hannah Butler. I'm a senior this year and I am offstage.
My name is Samantha Whitman. I'm a junior and I'm frosty and awesome.
My name is Jessica Johnson. I'm a sophomore and I'm a brother fellow. I am a senior and I'm also an actor.
I am Francisco Alvarez. I am a senior. My name is Samuel.
Wait, first, I want to tell a story.
Let me get the Danish.
No, no, this story is so good, you don't even need food.
There's no such thing.
What story are you talking about?
Story of how I won you.
Oh, stop.
Now Mickey, your grandmother.
Oh, I was the most eligible, popular, beautiful girl in the entire neighborhood.
What?
Well, if you're telling the story the way you want, I'm telling the story the way I want.
All right. Well, the night I first laid eyes on your grandmother, I had never seen anything so amazing. She was so, so beautiful, you could drink her from a glass.
I was wrong. Every word of this is true.
Now, naturally, I couldn't speak to her, so I followed her. Stood underneath the window and every night for a month, I would sing her this one song.
Oh, wait, let me get my mandolin.
Now, the night she came down, I was still far too nervous to speak words to her, so I just kept on singing.
Thank you very much, Arlington High School Theater Department. You're so great. We see why you got so many awards. Awesome. Okay, our next presentation is our March and April 2022 Students of the Month. Our first Student of the Month will be from Sam Houston High School, Perla Flores, Principal Juan Villarreal. If you would please come and do the introductions.
Good evening, President Mays, board members, and Dr. Cavassos. It is my honor to present Arlington ISD March Student of the Month, Sam Houston High School Senior, Perla Flores. Perla is an active member of our campus and exemplifies the ability to be an outstanding scholar-athlete. Perla is a member of our avid program, a member of our National Honor Society, a senior class representative, a four-year member of our track and cross-country teams. She has been a captain of the track and cross-country for three years. She has been a regional qualifier in cross-country for four years and a member of the 2021 Texas High School Coaches Association All-State Team. Perla is a current female record holder for the 5K for our campus and qualified to complete in the national cross-country meet in Huntsville, Alabama this past December. She is currently ranked in the top 5% of her class and plans to pursue a degree in education. Perla wants to become a high school teacher and a coach, and her favorite subject in school is English. It comes as no surprise that Perla reports that her hobby is running, and she says it is something she loves and will run for Midwestern State University on a track and academic scholarship. Coach Hill, Perla's track and cross-country coach, states that Perla is well-liked and respected by her peers and her competitors. Perla's AP Environmental Science, Ms. Thompson, sorry, states that Perla is a true gem to have in the classroom. She always is willing to ask questions and take risks when learning something new. Perla takes pride in completing difficult tasks and learning new things. But above all, she is kind, she is the first to step up to help someone in the class and make efforts to include others. And her positive attitude helps to motivate others. Perla's AP English Class, or Teacher, Ms. Klassnow, states that she has had the opportunity to see Perla's display endurance, dedication, and passion for both her sport and her academics. She is a talented athlete and a phenomenal scholar, and she can always count on Perla to add meaningful comments in the class discussion. Perla is a kind and a respectful person who adds value to any class. I proudly present Perla Flores as our Student of the Month for Sam Houston High School. We are so proud of Perla and her academic and athletic accomplishment. We are equally proud of her traits, including her kindness and helping attitude that embodies our motto, "In the halls of Sam Houston, there are no strangers." Señores and señoras Flores, felicidades. Es un honor tener a Perla como estudiante en nuestra escuela. Muchísimas gracias y felicidades.
Hello, I would like to say hello to everybody. I would like to thank everybody. I would like to thank the AISD Board for this amazing opportunity. I would like to thank Sam Houston for this amazing recognition. I want to thank my coaches and all my teachers who have made me the person I am now. And I would like to thank my family for every step and every opportunity they have given me. Me gustaría darles gracias a mis papás, a toda mi familia, mis hermanas que me han apoyado en cada paso que he tomado en mi vida. Todo con los deportes, con las académicas, todo nadie me ha ayudado y me gustaría decirles gracias. For this part of the speech, I would like to start by giving a small background of who I am. Going into Sam Houston, there's this quote that many, the principal says, and it's all around school, which is, "In the halls of Sam Houston, there's no strangers." When I joined Sam Houston, I didn't really see a meaning behind that quote. I saw it as just a school quote. But over time, and now as a senior, I finally realized what that quote means. It's not only of knowing who you are around in school, it's not who you know in the hallways, but who you know as yourself. When I entered Sam Houston, I was not the most confident person. I was not the most to speak in the classroom or to make my opinion heard. But over time, through sports and just through the academics, the people I have met through Sam Houston, where Temple, my coach, Coach Hill, Coach Vasquez, everybody I have met throughout the school, they have made me the person I am now. All my friends I have met, all the amazing people I have met in Sam Houston have made me who I am. So now when I see that quote of, "In the halls of Sam Houston, there's no strangers," it does not only mean that my teachers are not strangers, it does not mean that my friends are not strangers, but it means that I'm not a stranger to myself. Going into Sam Houston, I never thought I'd be standing here giving a speech. At last in the speech, I came up and was very scared to say. But now I'm here and I'm able to receive such amazing awards. I'm able to walk out of Sam Houston with the record that I never thought I would get. And I just, I will always remember Sam Houston as a place that not only gave me opportunities, but it truly gave me the ability to learn who I truly am. Now graduating Sam Houston, I'm able to say, like, when people ask me who I am, I'm able to say that I'm a proud Sam Houston student. And I'm proud to say that I have met and I have learned who I truly am through Sam Houston. And that is one of the reasons why I would always have this school spirit and I would always be proud of where I come from, because Sam Houston is not only a school to me, but it's a place that allowed me to learn who I am and who I want to be. So I would like to thank everybody for this amazing opportunity. I never thought I'd be standing here as a Student of the Month, so this is an amazing opportunity. And I would like to thank my coaches, my family, my friends who have made me who I am, because without them, I would not be who I am, and I would not be standing here. So I just want to thank everybody for this amazing opportunity and all the amazing opportunities we received, and of course, Sam Houston, for making now a school not only seem as a school, but as a place where it's actually a family. So thank you so much. Thank you for this opportunity.
Perla, thank you for the opportunity to get to know you and to listen to you. And if you've never given a speech before, you're on the right path, because that was amazing. And I think the biggest thing that I got out of what you said, and I hope other people received out of what you said, is knowing who you are, but also knowing your worth. And it seems like you're recognizing that, so you take that forward with you when you go to Midwestern and with whatever you do in the future. Now, if you will stay there, we're going to recognize Seguin's, and then we're going to come down there, get a picture with you, and provide you with a little gift, okay? Okay, so next, Seguin High School student, Ali Gutierrez, Principal Ray Borden, please.
Good evening, recently retired President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. As you guys know, it's always hard to pick one student to represent your school, and especially at Seguin, since we have so many great students. However, every year, it's the APs and the counselors and the teachers sit around and try to figure it out. We go through these names, and then all of a sudden, somebody says a name, and we're like, yes. And this year was no different, so when Ali Gutierrez's name was mentioned, the search for our Student of the Month unanimously ended. The first thing you're going to notice about Ali is her bright, big contagious smile, which I don't know if she's doing it now, because she's really nervous about this speech, but it's a smile you can see coming from a mile away. And I can assure you that she's much more than a beautiful smile, she's a beautiful person. And so, Ali, she's the embodiment of everything we hope our students want to be at Seguin. She's pleasant, she's upbeat with everyone, she's super sarcastic with me. She is an academically focused student that is involved in spreading a very positive culture at Seguin. She's involved in soccer, track, cross-country, Avid, and also medical courses at the CTE. She will be attending North Central Texas College on a running scholarship and also working towards her degree in biology to pursue a medical career. Her math teacher, Ms. Vaughn, says that Ali encompasses the spirit of Seguin and brings a genuine joy wherever she goes. Ali's avid teacher, Coach Tucker, describes her as a rising star that sheds light on a dimly lit room. She says that she's the type of person who will give her shirt off her back to make sure that people are okay. And so, what I can say about Ali is that my favorite story about her is one that really encapsulates the beauty of her kindness. And it was when, during a cross-country meet this year, Ali turned around to help another runner after that runner fell. She held her up under her arm for approximately a mile and a half, sacrificing her own race time. That runner's mom wrote a letter to me stating that, as an adult spectator, she saw an obvious display of excellent sportsmanship and graciousness. And as the mom of an injured runner, she saw Ali display selfless compassion for another human, and that she was grateful for Ali's compassionate heart, her great sportsmanship, and her graciousness as an athlete and a young woman. I present to you the only student this year whose kindness literally brought tears to my eyes, Ali Gutierrez.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ali, and I just wanted to say thank you so much for thinking of me for this award, and that I've never gotten anything like this, and I didn't think I really did anything out of the ordinary to receive this award. That's just how I am as a person. I would do it all over again if I had to. I am very, very grateful, and I wanted to thank my family and, as they have always had my back and have always wanted what was best for me, even if it meant waking up at 5:00 in the morning to take me to cross-country practice. And I also wanted to give another thank you to my coaches for always pushing me to be my best, even on days when I really didn't want to do anything and I wasn't really myself, and for always seeing me for the hard-working and committed student that I am, and giving me plenty of opportunities to show that I should be there and that I know that I am more than what I expected for myself. And I hope everyone has a great night. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ali, and thank you for sharing your story and the fact that you stood there and said that you're doing these things and it's nothing that you're looking for, you're not trying to do things. Opportunity finds where opportunity can be helped, and that seems to be you. And once again, I hope that you carry that on into your future, because we need more and more people that are like you. Okay, so, Perla and Ali, Dr. Cavassos and I are going to come down here, we're going to give you a presentation and take a picture, okay? Perla and Ali, this is a pin that the Board of Trustees wear and that we also give to others who are being recognized for their excellence, and tonight that includes both of you. So here you go. Here you go.
And Perla and Ali, this is for you. This is another reminder of what you've accomplished tonight. I'm very proud of you. You represent our students exceptionally well and our community, and I wish you the very best. I know you'll have much success. Perla, that's for you, and Ali, that's for you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Now let's take pictures.
I'm going to put you on that side that way. You're across your pants. And then we'll be on this side. Because you, yeah, okay. One, two. Okay.
Mr. Morales.
Good evening, President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board. It truly is always an honor and joy to say thank you to our community partners that play a wonderful role every day throughout the school year, even when we're not in school, working hard to make sure that our students and staff feel supported by their community. Tonight, we say thank you and celebrate an organization that truly is vital to our community. The Tarrant Area Food Bank's mission is empowering our communities to alleviate hunger by providing food, education, and resources. Originally founded in 1982 by a group of Fort Worth residents concerned about hunger in their community, the TAFB mission has expanded to serve 13 local counties with food assistance. In pursuing their mission, TAFB has made a direct impact on our AISD students and families that are in need of food assistance. As a focused effort this school year, TAFB has collaborated with our AISD Food and Nutrition Department, led by David Lewis, Director of Food and Nutrition, who's in the gallery this evening, to provide 19 food distribution events to AISD families. They've completed 15 so far this school year, affecting over 2,250 families. Most recently, TAFB launched their Red Bus Mobile Education Unit on March 26th, last month, with a kickoff event announcing the Mustang Market, which is one of six food pantries supported by TAFB that are open or will be opening in AISD campuses. This has been a collaborative effort with our Student Outreach Services Department, led by Tori Sisk and Luis Valdespino. Now, as for the Red Bus that I just mentioned, I think one of the reasons that we get along so well when we collaborate behind doors is that we appreciate the acronym in education and they appreciate the acronym in their organization. So the Red Bus stands for Resources Education Delivered, and they did that. We were able to leverage the Red Bus recently, last Saturday, at our Family Expo, where the Red Bus was part of the event, delivering education opportunities for our students and families that attended, and also delivered 250 boxes of food for our families. During the onset of COVID, the COVID pandemic, TAFB answered the call when we called and joined forces with Arlington Charities to provide two AISD kickoff food distribution events, one at AT&amp;C Stadium and one at the JW Council location. Over 2,000 families were positively impacted by those events. TAFB also continues to be a collaborative force within our community, serving as a member of the Coordinating Food Resources Committee, a committee consisting of Tarrant County nonprofits, independent school districts, cities, and municipalities that convene to share available food resources and discuss opportunities to work together to serve our communities. That's just a short snapshot of their recent engagement with AISD, but we know TAFB has been a longtime supporter of our AISD families, so they continue to work diligently to address and alleviate hunger in our community. We thank TAFB for their support and impact on Arlington ISD. And this evening, accepting on behalf of TAFB, we have Vicky Martinez, who is the Vice President of Community Impact, and her colleague Vivian Martinez. Please come up.
Hi, good afternoon. First, I'd like to say congratulations, ladies. You guys are great. We are also honored, very honored, to accept this. There's no way Tarrant Area Food Bank would be able to do this without the support from the ISD as well as the city of Arlington, so we'd like to thank you very much.
Vicky and Vivian, if y'all would stay here, we're going to come down and give you a presentation, Dr. Cavassos, tonight. But first, I just want to say thank you. I know many of my colleagues have participated in PTAs, different nonprofit groups, and we know how important it is, and our teachers, how important it is that nutrition, food, is important to be able to learn and sit in a classroom and be able to concentrate. And so for that, we very much appreciate the partnership that we have with you. We also know during the summers that sometimes kids' families need food to eat, and y'all have been there, so really want to continue this partnership. Thank you very much, and you're very, very well structured for this Community Citizen Award tonight. So, we're going to come down and take a picture with you. And so the plaque says, "Community Engaged for Excellence Award of Appreciation, presented to Tarrant Area Food Bank for the volunteer service to the Arlington ISD, today's date, April 7th, 2022." Okay, next on the agenda is our Open Forum for Agenda Items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net/BoardMeetingSpeakerRequest. No later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have requesters registered to address the board on agenda items?
Yes, ma'am, we have four speakers registered for the Open Forum for Agenda Items.
Okay. So when I call your name, you may step to the mic. This is a routine part of the school. of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. You will have two minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up, and please end your presentation at that time. So the first name that I have is Cindy Kalakuka.
Let me see if I need my glasses still. Doesn't look as good with the tiara, but, you know. Good evening, everyone. I'm here wearing the tiara that I received when I was chosen Teacher of the Year at Dunn Elementary. Not the actual tiara, because I actually broke that one the first day I had it, but this is the one that my husband bought me for our anniversary, so I never get to wear it. The idea is that I earned the title and the tiara, at least partially, by speaking up for teachers and students. And my message remains the same: Please keep it simple. I know you've been listening, and I truly appreciate the things that you have done so far. I continue to request that you take all extra training, coaching, et cetera, off of the teacher's plates. Leave us time to plan the rigorous, engaging lessons that fit our students' needs. Use all the staff that would be used in providing those services to work with the students. Have dedicated student-support interventionists in kindergarten through second grade. Have the professional development people prepare all the necessary materials for the interventionists so they can spend their time working with the students. We have extra funds for the next two years. Let's use them to their fullest potential now. If we're unable to continue in the years after that, so be it, but we should not forego making a huge impact because of what might happen later. Besides, I know you all, if something really works, you'll find a way to fund it. Thank you for all that you do, and I've got an Avengers bucket with Hershey Kisses that I left with Lisa Harvey. Thank you. Keep it simple. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Rebecca Rogers. Rebecca, is that too high for you?
I'm short, but I can pull it down.
Make sure that, yeah, that lowers so we can hear you.
All right, thank you. Okay. The residents of Arlington would like to know what kind of kickbacks and underhanded deals are being made with the county and pharmaceutical companies. It is apparent that the health and well-being of the students and staff are really not your priority. True informed consent is not being given, and 20, and 23 of AISD representatives, including every single board member, have been notified of the official reports that were released at the beginning of March to the public via federal court order showing the massive amounts of adverse reactions to the vaccines. In a report from this Monday, which I just handed out to you in an article on April 4th, in the U.S. alone, the Vaccine Adverse Events Reporting System VAERS recorded a total of 26,059 deaths caused by the COVID-19 vaccines. These vaccines are caused, has caused permanent disabilities in 48,342 people in the U.S. alone. That doesn't mean worldwide. Children are at risk for lifelong health problems, with myocarditis emerging as one of the most common. In September alone, more than 86% of children ages 12 to 17 reported symptoms of myocarditis severe enough to require hospitalization, all for a virus with a 99% survival rate for healthy individuals. What is even more eye-opening, in January, former Pfizer VP Mike Eden declared COVID vaccines are toxic by design. Instead of taking a cautious approach and researching, the district officials have jumped on board, plowing full swing ahead at the risk of their students and staffs. Please stop playing pharmacy and go back to what school should be. Teaching students how to read, write, and do math is what should be happening. Leave out the political games of CRT and SELs, and stop putting lives of students at risk by encouraging these vaccines through your vaccination buses and centers. If parents want to get their students vaccinated, they can walk into Kroger, CVS, Walgreens, or the doctor's office to get their students jabbed. It isn't the school's responsibility, so please keep an end to these practices. I've also included up there a copy, that we would like to have a copy of your surety bonds and your oath of office.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Okay, next we have Blanca Martinez.
Good evening. I have here copies that I'm going to distribute to you in a minute. These are articles that have actually come out, and there's hundreds of them, but obviously some of our leaders and our board members and even some teachers haven't read them, haven't looked at the evidence. It's time for us to look at the evidence, the documentation, the science. They continue to say misinformation when they are the ones giving the misinformation. I say it's time for us to say the truth, to stand on the evidence. I have here an article, CNN, "Misleads Parents Follows Mainstream Script to Push Vaccines for Young Kids," by Dr. Setti, M.D. And when you look throughout this article, it has, and it quotes all of the stats, the evidence, and the science to back what the doctor is saying. None of us are doctors, but we have to rely on doctors that have, are living up to their oath and are saying we care about the people that we're supposed to be getting, taking care of. We have triple vaccinated deaths, skyrocketed 400, 495% in January. 80% of all new COVID cases are fully jabbed. It's right here. The evidence is right here, by Ethan Huff. This was released in February, February 15th of 2022. "Children's Health Defense: NCVIA, the Legislation That Changed Everything: Conflicts of Interest Undermine Children's Health, Part II." In here, it quotes all of the evidence and the implications. For the most part, however, parents, attorneys, healthcare professionals, and members of the general public are unaware of the NVICP's existence, and according to HHS, fewer than 1%, listen here, fewer than 1% of vaccine adverse events are ever reported. I would like to know, out of all of the children that we have been vaccinating at the schools, at the buses, what are the adverse events that have occurred in our children?
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Next, we have Marisol Fritz.
I'll bring you your copy. I have been a registered nurse for 23 years, and I took the Florence and Itonville Pledge to do no harm to my patients and to advocate for their safety overall. I also abide by the American Nurses Association Code of Ethics to do no harm and to promote safety. It is my duty and my responsibility to bring this information to you all. On March 23rd, I sent 23 AISD representatives. To include all trustees, I sent you all an email with the FDA/Fizer Clinical Trials Adverse Events Report that was just released by court order on March 1st. According to this report, the 1,200 devastating adverse events were listed. They were all known since February 2021. This was just before the May rollout on 12- to 15-year-olds, and in October for 5- to 11-year-olds. My email was completely ignored by every single one of you and every AISD person that I sent it to. AISD continues to still have a VaxMobile clinic at Sam Houston High School, and that's where Tarrant County comes out on a 60-foot bus and gives COVID-19 shots to children with parental consent. The problem is that parents are not being fully informed, and this is an experimental injection, and the risk and benefits must be given. This information should be given to every single parent, and it should be explained to them in whatever their language is. This report also showed 1,223 fatalities, 1,927 COVID-19 infections, multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children, also known as MISC, which is supposedly the new disease that children were gonna get, that Cook Children's is pushing, neonatal death, meningitis stroke, genital herpes, diabetes mellitus, heart attack, MERS, Zika virus-associated Guillain-Barre syndrome. This is an absolute horrendous document, and then anybody that can continue to promote this with buses on, at schools, I mean, really need to pray for you all.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Your time is extended.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz.
The information in there is also for surety bonds for each one of you from several parents.
So, the next item on our agenda is our Discussion Action Item. We have considered the schematic design for Carter Junior High School Replacement School. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays, and tonight we bring, for board consideration, the schematic design for the new Carter Junior High School Replacement School. And before, Kelly, you can come up, but before we introduce our guest, I do want to take a moment to thank the Carter Junior High staff, the students, and everyone who participated, and of course the architects who do the work, and Mr. Horn, you as well, because this is a big project, and this is an important project for Arlington ISD. It's part of that East Arlington Master Plan, so this is an exciting time in Arlington to be able to talk about replacing Carter Junior High with a brand-new facility, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Horn.
Certainly. Thank you, President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. As Dr. Cavassos mentioned, this is another big step, pardon me. There we go. Thank you so much. This is another big step in the East Arlington Plan. It's not the final, right, because we're going to do work at all of the schools throughout the district and including those in East Arlington, but the replacement school for Carter Junior High School has been a fun process so far, and we're excited to present schematic design tonight. And so I would like to introduce the team. I'm gonna reserve Beverly for just a moment, and mention Susan Smith, who is the principal for Corgan, and Ashley Snead, an architect for the group that helped us with the process so far, and of course Beverly Fornoff, she'll be presenting this evening, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions following that. So Beverly.
I may have to. I know. Well, thank you so much for having us here tonight, President Mays, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Cavassos. We are grateful and we are honored to be part of the design of your new junior high school. So I'm just gonna jump right into it. We're gonna show you a little bit of this overall schedule, just so you kind of get an idea of where we are now and how long this process is going to take. We are right at the end. This presentation tonight concludes schematic design, and then we'll roll right into design development, construction documents, and then, of course, bidding and construction. So one of the things that we do have to consider is that we have to align the start of the construction schedule of the new junior high school with the completion of Thornton Elementary School, and then at that time is when we can start the demolition of the existing Knox Building, and we will have that in the same package. So, every campus, every facility, every project that we do is unique. It's unique to the community, it's unique to that campus. And what we do, Corgan, what Corgan does, is we start by doing a visioning process, and what that is, is that that's information gathering for us. We want to learn about what your goals are, right, as a district, what the faculty's goals are, and what, where the students need to be, and how they can succeed in this facility. So I'm gonna go through some of the activities that we did with the students, with the parents, with the faculty, as well as leadership. So, right off the bat, with the students, we, when we met with them in person, we gave them this form, and we said, "We want you to fill in the blanks. We want you to tell us about where, what your favorite place is and what you want out of this campus." And so this really starts to set up a framework for us, so I'm gonna read this out for you. "My favorite place in the school," oh, and so as they fill that out, we took that information back, and we kind of picked the most common themes across all of them. So, "My favorite place in the school is the library and music class because of the good energy and a space to feel safe. I wish our campus had bigger hallways with windows to see nature and more room. The future Carter Junior High will be THE place to be if it is a positive, welcoming environment that provides safety. In the new school, Carter Junior High students will feel excited and happy because of the open and comfortable areas for interaction and the access to the outdoors." It's very, very telling, right? There are very key things in there that we've already started to learn about what they're looking for in these new campuses, or this new campus. And so we also want to make sure that we are looking at the current culture, and then also how that campus is connected to the community, and what's, what's really important for these students. So then, we did ask the faculty some questions. We kind of prepped them. We said, "When your students walk into the new campus, how do you want them to feel?" We said, "Pick one word," right? And so the larger the word, the more times we saw that word. So, of course, you can see right there, welcomed, family. We heard that a lot in our discussions. Safe, community. You start to see those connections. And then we asked them, "How can the facility promote emotional, physical, and mental wellness, and help the students transition, right, from leaving elementary school and then entering high school?" The number-one thing we heard was the positive impact that this facility could have, to provide restoration, a reset, to be inviting, and also to create spaces for faculty wellness, right? Because not only do your students, your students will learn a fact of wellness through how their faculty interacts with them and engages with them, right? And also creating those traits for success, having fun, colorful environments that are designed with purpose, and of course, pride, comfort, secure. So then, when we met with all of the different groups, we also wanted to show some visual surveys, some, some images, that we can really understand, what does it look like, right? What appeals to you, and why would this appeal to you? And we really talked through a lot of that. So, you can see here, we talked to, again, the leadership, faculty, and students. We showed images, had them kind of vote on which ones they would like, and then asked them why. So what I'm gonna show you now is, this is the, from the leadership visioning session, so it shows the key spaces that the fact, I mean, the leadership said, "Hey, yes, our faculty, our students, they would love these spaces." And then we, again, talked about why. The outdoor learning space, they thought was very important because it allows that, that little breath of fresh air, that connection to nature and the outdoors, a lot of natural light, and again, areas of choice, right? That's always a key. Then you're, you're gonna start to see some similarities, right, between the three. So this is your faculty visioning activity session. We start to talk about, okay, we, we, while we need collaboration spaces, but what does that mean? What does that mean for this faculty? How are you gonna use it? And how are you gonna charge your students to use it? So, we talked through some different options, and sort of decided how they were gonna use this space, and as well as, again, that connection to the outdoors. You start seeing that outdoor space again, right? So, the next slide I'm gonna show you are the students, and I don't think you're gonna be surprised. So this is the three, the four images that the students really connected with. A lot of it was the bright colors, again, that outdoor learning, having that variety of spaces, a friendly space, you know, things that are, give them, again, the choices. So through all of this information, we come back to the office, right, and we're going, "Okay, we have all this data, what do we do with it?" And what we do is, we really go back through and start to find those similarities, and we establish these key project goals. And what this does is that it always, through the whole process, we're always going back and looking at these project goals to make sure that we are true to what you guys need, and what your teams need, and what your faculty and your students need. So, learning-rich environment, that is inclusive, collaborative, that's designed intentionally and with a purpose. Community, again, family, we heard that so much. They consider themselves a family, they really like that connection to their community, having that sense of pride, and almost rebranding themselves with this new facility. And of course, opportunities for all. Again, there's that student and faculty well-being in providing safe spaces. So another part of the, of the, excuse me, let me take a breath, like the students did. So another part of the, of the, excuse me, let me take a breath, like the students did earlier today. I learned a lot from that. Take a breath. So as we did the, the visioning sessions as well, we did want to look at the site and start to sort of determine, you know, how things could fit on this site. So this is that area of East Arlington. It kind of gives you a quick snapshot of all the facilities in that area. So that number one, that's the orange, that's the existing Carter Junior High School. Number two is the existing Knox Elementary, as well as the, the park that surrounds it. And so that's that new site location for the junior high school. Number four is Rowark that will be swapped for a city park with the district. And then all of the other areas in blue, those are existing elementary schools. And then the purple are the high schools. So you see how by this new location, it really centralizes this junior high school around this entire East Arlington area. So zooming in a little closer in onto the, the site plan, you see Highway 360 to the east. You see Knox Elementary, and we've got two major arterial streets, Sherry Street to the west, and Mitchell Street's actually not along our site, but those are the two main access off of Texas 360. And something that we saw pretty quickly was there's a really large drainage way in this site. And I got with our civil engineer and I said, tell me about this. And she came back and said, this is a FEMA floodplain. That, that, going through a process of FEMA and doing those evaluations, it really, really, there's a lot that's involved with that. And so we came back to Kelly, to Dr. Cavassos, and said, we would really like to try and stay out of this floodplain to mitigate any delays or any overthings that we might have to do. So with that, again, there's existing Knox Elementary. You see Stonegate to the south, Carter Drive to the east. I think currently the entrance is on Stonegate. And then Greenway Street to the north, you see that existing park, the existing pool. And so we're really, really trying to stay to the south of that floodplain. So we gave them this, a board, a blank board with some little cutouts of different pieces of the building. And again, we went through the leadership group, the faculty group, the community group, as well as the student group, and said, how would you design this building? So this is a little picture of the leadership group. There was a lot of really good discussions about where would the appropriate place to be for your track and field? Would you like a north-south orientation, which is more traditional? Or would we want to consider potentially, because of the site and how tight it is, doing an east-to-west orientation? And then these were with your faculty, student, community groups. They really got into this. They love this. Particularly the students. They had some great ideas. And we learned a lot just from listening to them. You know, again, they were taking buildings and separating them out. And we were like, well, why are you, you know, putting the gym over here and this over here? And they said, well, this gives us an outdoors place to walk across so we can get some fresh air as we're walking from one class to another. And I was like, oh, that's wonderful. And then, again, the faculty group, it was really interesting because, you know, sometimes when you know what you know, it's hard to break out of it. And so they would start, and they would start creating the existing Carter Junior High. And we'd point that out to them, and they'd be like, oh! And they'd have to go back, and they're like, okay, well, let's rethink this, so. And so what we did again was take all those pictures, bring them back, and sort of combine them and see what was the most appropriate or what, what was the most common. So this is actually where we sort of landed on just a, a site party, right? So something we do have to consider as well is that this neighborhood has single-story residential houses all around it. This site is very tight because we're not allowed to use the, I mean, we're not using the entire, the entire site. And so we had these discussions of, could you do a three-story junior high school? Is it a possibility? Well, let's look at some options. And then how can we do that without having a very tall three-story building right next to a single-story residential? And so, again, we laid this out. We thought that it felt appropriate to put that classroom block, which would be the three-story block, closer to that floodplain, have that library be the heart of the school, administration in the front, so you see that entry, the red arrow with the entry. And it made the most sense for the main entry to be on Sherry Street. It is the major, a major roadway. We do know that Carter Drive has a little bit of traffic, and it might not be a good idea to, to face the building that way. And then putting more of our public spaces to the south, so you have your cafeteria, your athletics, performing arts, and then again strategically stepping that. So that's where we ended on our visioning session. And now I'm going to go into the schematic design. You'll see there's a lot that has happened between those visioning sessions and schematic. So I'm going to show you the floor plan first. So again, you see Sherry Street to the west. We do have the main entry, number 12, to the west. And then we kept the, the classroom bar to the north. We felt like we could really tap into having that connection to more of that park-like setting along that drainage channel, and then also to the north of that. And then keeping that track and field to the east, having good circulation for traffic around the building. And so I'll, I'll go into a little more detail. I'll show you an aerial that you can really see how this starts to get put together. So floor plans, the area in the, kind of the blue-purple to the, to the bottom left, that's your administration with the main entry to the north. In the center here, in that kind of a golden soft yellow color, that is the cafeteria and the kitchen. The area in pink is fine arts, and the area in green to the right, that's athletics. Again, keeping all of your classroom blocks to the north. So the bright yellow to the right is science, and to the left it's art, CTE classes, and your sped. And you notice that we've actually separated that bar, right? And we created this really nice outdoor space, outdoor courtyard, that is going to be engaged by the students as they go to classes and between classes and through. So second floor, because the site was so tight, we did have to say, okay, what can go upstairs? What made sense? And we really felt like that library could still be the heart of that campus, right in the front. You can really see it. It's very visual. And then that way, it's also being activated by these classrooms as kids are going to their different classes. So that's the area in pink-red. And then you can see the green, those are classrooms with a little bit of space between that and the service areas, you know, restrooms, electrical, those sort of things. And that can start to create our collaboration areas. And then the third floor, and this is really special, again, we talked about faculty wellness. Well, so again, we've got our two classroom blocks to the north, so the green areas, those are classrooms. In the center of that, you see the two stairs, and then this area in blue, that would be a dedicated faculty workroom with phone rooms so that they can take that break and come here and use these phone rooms to make some, you know, maybe private conversations that they may need to have with parents or with other teachers. And then we've also got some other CTE and language labs on the south of that. So how does that start to come together, right, in a 3D form? So again, this is an aerial view of the new junior high school. And so the street to the left, the bottom left, that is Sherry Street. To the right is Stonegate. And so you see the front entry, and you see that block right in the center, that's the library with administration below. And you see how it kind of starts to step up, right? So it's, it's a little pushed back from the street. It's not right up against the single-story residences. And then on that west side, on that left side, those are the three-story classroom blocks. This is our main entry. And so we really wanted to define that very long spine that we have, that east-to-west spine with this phenolic wood panel, wood look, with some brick elements as well. So again, that, that center block right there, that's the library on the second floor, and then your main entry just to the left of that. And this is that very special outdoor courtyard that really features that faculty, teacher workroom space, or faculty space. And so lots of natural light that are coming through those stairwell, stairwell blocks, and then, again, classroom on either side. And really, again, having that direct sort of line of sight to the, that, that drainage. There's a existing pedestrian bridge that we keep there, and then also across to the park to the north, or the park area to the north. And then this is a view of the other entrance, right, the main kind of after-hours gym entry. So your gym is to the left, classroom blocks to the right. We wanted to give you kind of what this looks like at dusk. And then one more view, the interior. So that is that main interior spine. You're actually standing right next to probably the fine arts area, looking to the front of the campus. You see the library on the second floor. Our second floor does have that balcony hallway that'll extend to connect the two classroom blocks. You've got your cafeteria to the left with these slider doors that can open up potentially for after-hours events where they can kind of spill out into this hallway, and then also out into that outdoor courtyard, outdoor courtyard to the right. And you're kind of seeing a little peek of that stairwell. So that is my presentation. Thank you very much. We're very excited, and I'm open for any questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Trustees with questions? Mrs. Fowler?
Thank you, President Mays.
This is incredible. Thank you so very much. And, you know, back in the day, people built things without really asking questions of the stakeholders. It was, well, we think this is what they need, and we'll just build it, and they'll be okay with it. But now I love the fact that you're talking to the teachers, administration, the students, the parents, the community, what they want to see in this building. And I think that is, that is so important for, for A I S D and the community that we're all working together to know what we all want and what we all need. So I'm very, very appreciative of that. One question that I have, the one where you were talking about the gym at dusk, if we could look at that. Will there be a way for, like, after-school activities? Is there a way to enter the gym without having to go through the main part of the school? Kind of like what's being done over at Gunn Junior High?
Yeah, we could certainly look at that. We are, again, still at schematic design, so there's going to be a lot of more conversations with security, with maintenance, with other departments, with the curriculum departments as well, to really refine the plan. And so absolutely, there could be a vestibule here that only goes into, you know, the gym and area. So that way, this can be locked down from the rest of the campus, or the rest of the campus.
I, I do think that's important, and that way, we don't have to worry about people wandering through the buildings or keeping this part open, or, you know, if this part's already been cleaned and now people are going to come through. So if we could think about that, I think that would probably be beneficial.
That's a great comment.
But thank you so much. This looks wonderful.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays. Can you go back to the slide that shows the position of the new junior high in the context of the other elementaries in the neighborhood? So I just, I just want to dwell on this for a minute and, and explain how much I appreciate the citizens, the Capital Need Steering Committee that looked at the 2019 bond. There were a lot of discussions going into forming that committee, and then, and then afterwards among the board, that Carter Junior High was a big project, a big priority for us. But it was going to take some creative solutions to make that happen. But you can just see from this chart, I mean, where Carter Junior High currently is, is at the very far western edge of its attendance zone. And it's not centrally located in proximity to the rest of the, the elementary schools that feed into it. So I just want to, again, point out how creative a solution the district came up with to solve a problem, not just with Carter, but with the fact that we do need to replace some of those aging elementary schools. And so you can see here that Rowark is going offline. We're going to build a new Berry at number nine. We're building a new, a new Thornton at number three. That's going to combine the Knox and Rowark, or the Knox and Thornton campuses, and Berry and Rowark will be combined. And I just, every time I see one of these slides that shows that, it's just such an example of how the district with the 19 bond tried to be efficient and creative at solving a whole lot of problems at once in a way that really accelerated our East Arlington Master Plan. Because we do have a lot of campuses like Rowark and Berry and Thornton that have really outlived, not that they're inadequate, you know, inadequate totally, but that they have severe issues that we just can't keep picking those cans down the road. But I remember very early on in some of our bond discussions, it was, you know, maybe we might get a new Carter in one or two elementary schools. But we really were creative and found a way to get not only a new Carter, but to centrally locate it, and then also get with Webb for new elementary schools, and really accelerating the replacement of our aging campuses. And so wanted to say thanks again, wanted to point that out and explain to the community using this slide because we're not just building new schools for the sake of it. There's a real purpose behind it and a real interlocking plan here. And I'm, having grown up in this neighborhood, right down the street from number four, and, and my parents went to where Knox is now for junior high. Just really am familiar with this neighborhood, and I know how much it means to the community there. And so really appreciate that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Mays. Thank you so much. I love the design. I love where it's going. I'm always cautious. I was just in a school the other day and saw the open space, and it always brings back fear because the district had to do so many renovations from the old silver bullet that people thought would change education of open-concept classrooms, right? So you, I always use that, when were those built, the '70s is the big time? That was all being done?
Yes, yeah.
And districts across the country had to spend hundreds of millions, probably up to the billions of dollars, to be able to fix those because it was not the silver bullet to fix education. So I'm always cautious over what they think the newest, latest, greatest silver bullet is. But I do think this is a design that makes a building very flexible for 57 years of use from that design. I do want to ask a question. You know, listen, the problem, biggest challenge we have with Carter right now is John, the current Carter Oldside is Johnson Creek. With this FEMA floodplain, is there any concerns over that land of what's being built? I, I love the park on the one side, the basketball court's going to be open. I mean, is there any concerns over the longevity of that? Is there more erosion that we should be planning for, anything of that nature?
So I know that right there at Greenway Street, that's actually a, a concrete culvert. And they do have a rock gavine on both sides, both at Greenway and at Sherry Street. And I think that a lot of that is to, to help alleviate any of that erosion that may happen or occur in those areas. So with something we can definitely continue to look at, talk to the city about, and just make sure that we are all on the same page, that this won't become a potential.
Okay. And, and I know we're early, we'll discuss that. And then you also have mentioned along that, what are we calling that, a creek? What, what is it called? What do we call it?
FEMA floodplain?
Just a floodplain?
It, I mean, it is actually named creek, but it, but it is a, there is a floodway there, and.
Is there water in it, or just preparing for a flood?
What's really interesting about this is, is it does collect a lot of water after a big rain like we've had in this past week. But it doesn't take the same aggressive flow that you would see in Johnson or Rush and some of the others around. So, so the light, it can always change and redirect, right? But we, we don't get as much flow through there. And that was even part of the discussion I had with the city recently, the Parks and Rec Department, where they mentioned that, you know, it's, it's dry most of the time. And, and so it's, we have to preserve it. And we, and, and anything we would do to change it would require an extensive study or a long period of time. But it's, it is, if you can say, a little more stable, probably a little more stable than some of the more, some of the larger creeks we have in town.
Okay. And so, and, and with that creek, one that's dry and then fills up, carries a lot of trash, which overall affects the entire area and the whole thing. So what's the concept and the thought of that wood fence? I know your number-one concern is safety over that creek, or whatever we're calling it. Safety's on that, with, with the wood fence, is that going to collect trash? What's going to happen in that area? And, and a wood fence, that requires a lot more maintenance over the years, so I'd love to hear thoughts on that.
It's a great question, and we, we love the idea of what the city's done to the park. And, and they really were excited about the, the fact that we've committed to maintain, and just like we do on other properties, leave the trees that are there, preserve those. There's a lot of very nice specimen trees to the north. They've done a lot to improve with the walk, it's a decomposed granite walkway or path, and we, we propose keeping that with the bridge and the split-rail fence that you're talking about.
Yeah.
The split-rail fence, what's good about it is it, it does allow things to, to move through rather than collect.
Help me understand, split-rail fence?
Split-rail is kind of that, it's a very simplistic fence. It doesn't stop much in the way of persons or animals or, or debris. It just kind of creates a boundary. And so split-rail is, you've seen the, the very rough-cut cedar posts that.
I got you.
They're just split by hand, and then they, they hue out a tongue and grew, or a mortise and tenon joint in it. And you only typically see two rails, and they're kind of rough.
So it wouldn't be like, like at Adams Elementary, we have a pretty extensive fence that no one could.
Right.
I mean, it'd take a lot to get down into that little culver or whatever it is.
Right. And that was primarily because that one's a more aggressive flow and. And that was primarily because that one's a more aggressive flow and much deeper. This is very shallow, and, and we're almost trying to preserve the very natural look and, and create a little softer look and image, so that it's not really, there's a boundary to kind of tell the kids and people to kind of go this direction and towards the pedestrian bridge. But we really want it to feel more natural and become more, and maybe engage it as a science project at times. So, with it being shallow, we're not too concerned about any risks, other than, I mean, you could get muddy if it was wet and, and so forth. But that rail should allow us to direct traffic to the bridge.
Junior high, junior high science teachers would love creeks.
Exactly, yeah, that's right.
Son of a retired junior high, son of a junior high seventh grade science teacher forever. She's crawled in more creeks than we know. And, and I see around there, around that park, you know, I noticed a rolling gate for that parking lot to be able to block it off, which I understand that. But around that park and that basketball court, because there is some concern over in the city, we don't have enough usable basketball courts for enough young men and women to be able to utilize. So that would not be blocked off, it'd be open for students to come in anytime.
It would have, it would have a gate, and it would likely have a fence. Dr. Kavasos and I have met with various city leaders, in addition to Parks and Rec Department. And they, like us, would like to, they love the idea of using it, continue to use that as maybe a footsaw court. If you've seen the small, kind of soccer type.
At the, the new east building, and it's super popular, the footsaw.
Exactly. And they've mentioned that they think that would be probably the best idea for us. But we still have some development.
Yeah, I would add that we're seeking a partnership.
Right.
Good.
So this, this would be an ideal time to, because they have an interest, to your point, Mr. Hogg, of increasing the amount of basketball courts in, in the city. We have an interest in having one. And I think when our purposes intersect like that, there's a wonderful opportunity to help not only fund it, but support it and, and access it and things like that. So that's an active discussion.
Okay.
That's right. But we do, they, they like us, they do want to have some control so that we could close it off after a certain period of time at night. And so that the neighbors can enjoy a peaceful evening without fights and that sort of thing.
At some point, things have to end.
Right. So that's the purpose for the, the gate and things like that. Just to, and they've actually talked to Dr. Kavasos and I about if there's this venture between the two of us that they could consider having their parks people also help us to, to close things and secure things at night, that sort of thing. So we're, we're having those discussions, along with the, the park replacement for Rowark.
Okay. I appreciate it. I, good, good job so far. I know this is step thirty of the thousand that you have, but I appreciate it so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Mrs. McMura?
Thank you for the presentation. Ms. Foranoff, I just wanted to reiterate something Ms. Fowler actually said. I really appreciate the process that you and your Corgan team intentionally partook in with our staff and our students, with the visioning and information gathering process. A couple weeks ago, I visited the existing Carter Junior High, and Principal Lopez reiterated a lot of the needs and, and the preferences that you had in your presentation. And unknowingly, you know, that I had this information from you guys, she reiterated a lot of the same points. We want more natural lighting, we want collaboration spaces, safety is key. And I, I just can't thank you enough. We visited Gunn Junior High recently, and Dr. Varnell said something that really resonated with me. He said, you know, instead of building a building, and then we move in and adapt to it, this is the other way around. We have a purpose and a vision, and we are creating a building to serve that purpose. And that's so important. Our kids in Arlington ISD are only at Junior High for two years. And I mean, that's, that goes by in a snap.
And it's a huge transition.
It's huge. And so, I think that it's wonderful that we're creating a learning space for our Junior High students, even though they won't be there that long, they're at elementary and high school for much longer in their school careers. This makes a learning space that they will remember fondly. And it, it's tailored to their needs as learners. So thank you so much. I only have one question. I was wondering if you could go back to one of the very first slides. I think the title of the slide was site option. Yes. So, the red space, is that the outdoor entryway? And is that going to go all the way through with, with no connection between the, the classrooms and then the other facility?
You're talking about that red bar in the middle?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so for us, we were looking at that as a really strong east-to-west, like, central, central corridor connection.
Okay, so that's not outdoor?
No, no, it's not outdoor, yeah.
I was just wondering how that's going to work with visitors.
So when you look at this, you really see that real strong, that area in the white, right? That east-to-west connection. So that's kind of what that represented.
Okay. I just wanted to double check.
That's, that's the biggest nod to what the students told us, which is they needed, they really felt like it was important of a very wide, large wide corridor where all those, where the students, the bulk of the students travel for both safety and, and security when they're moving up and down that spine. So, I, I think that's, again, that's why Beverly and the team designed such a wide corridor there.
All right. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McMura. Mr. Will Banks? Press it, press it again, please.
There we go. Thank you, President Mays. And while we're on this slide, just a little bit more clarification. So, everything that we see in yellow, both, in both wings of the classrooms on the north side, those are all labs, is that correct?
So, on the left side, those are kind of CTE labs. So there, there's certain programs that I think are in there. We're calling them labs right now, but they're really more like computer labs or Project Lead the Way. So those will house those facilities. On the right side, it's actually a combination of science labs and science classrooms.
And classrooms.
So we'll need to update that slide.
Okay. And then, and so then we have sped, and then the two purple ones in the upper-left, those, are those the fine arts or the performing arts?
Those are art. Visual art.
Visual arts, okay.
And so, again, really strategic, putting them and, next to that outdoor courtyard, that they could go out there and do some pretty landscapes of, of their new view.
In.
Or different things.
Can we scroll to the front entrance? Yeah, there we go. So, everything that's clad in wood, that's the new library. So there's tons of natural light. Correct?
Correct.
And I think this is more just from the rendering, but can you give me an idea, size-wise versus other Junior High libraries? How big that is? It just kind of looks a little small there, but I think that's just the way it looks in the rendering, not necessarily the actual square footage.
So I'll go back to your, so you see that there, it is part of, it is programmed for the junior, for a junior high school size. We did talk to the library services director. And so, we are accounting stacks versus classroom space versus sort of a, you know, breakout maker area space. And so that is part of our next level of development, to actually like, start to allocate those. And so, I think it, I think it is the, the same size that it should be.
Okay. So compared to the existing lib, well, say the new library, Gunn, for instance, it's, it's a long comparable.
It's, I think it's actually larger.
It's larger than the one we have at Gunn, actually. That, that's just by nature of the, the design and, and how we designed the current Gunn library. But it favor, it, it fares more, or compares more favorably to libraries like we have at our, at Barnett and Nichols now, and those schools, so, which are much larger.
Okay. And will the backside of that overlooked down towards the cafeteria, or?
Right now, we, we've talked about that internally, if we wanted to have that site aligned into the cafeteria. Again, that's still in part of our next level of development. Right now, this plan actually isn't too updated. We've actually moved a lot of that program, so you do have visibility between that walkway into the hallway. So this, this little area to the north of the library, that little box? So that'll all be sort of an open glass, so that they can see activities going on in the library, from the, from the main hall.
Okay. So now, if you can go back to that front entrance rendering. So, the classrooms. When you're walking in, the entryway towards, under the, the awning with the sign on it, that, I think, emergency door, and going up, is that glass, or, no, that's a different material?
Yeah, we are actually showing that as glass. So that's your hallway, the, to the left, right? That whole wood look. That's actually the hallway that connects across to the classroom pods, right? And so, we actually have a set of stairs at each end. And because this is a three-story, we have to, by code, provide an exit out from the stairwells themselves. And so, we're using that as, to have some light in those stairwells, as well as across that corridor on your, on your third floor.
Okay. And so, I'm sorry, my first question was, so with the library, that's going to be an extended height ceiling in the library?
Correct.
Not two stories of stacks, but just more of a high ceiling for?
Yeah. So the cafeteria is a two-story volume, and the library is a story and a half.
Story and a half, I was thinking.
That's correct, okay.
Yeah.
So then you have the one story of the.
Okay. Now, my final question, on the classroom to the, area to the north, we've got a short bank, you know, looks like it's designed in kind of the thirds there. You've got approximately one-third of that length of linear windows. But the classrooms that would be on the far north wouldn't have windows there. I assume they would have windows on the other side?
They would have windows to the north. So you see this here along the, and which is better, actually, northern light is better.
Better, right.
Because it's not as, as sharp.
Okay.
And we do have mullion extensions on the east-to-west areas that do have.
I see those, or I think I see those.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, that was my next question. So my final question is, going back to the park area to the north of the culver. Okay. So, you know, we talked about the existing basketball court over there. We thought about adding additional court, like a mini soccer court or additional basketball courts in that area closest to Sherry Street? That's currently in the middle of that track area?
Yeah, that, what we're looking at more than anything is, is some additional parking, just to help us with the needs for the campus. But also, there'd be an element of the, the teaching element, teachers and so forth that would probably like to park and get a little extra walking or steps in. So, some will like to park close, others may enjoy that walk every day. But that would also serve as a place for parents to pull up, maybe in a different way. They would be able to access off of Greenway and, and let their students walk across the bridge versus trying to pull into the main drive. So it kind of serves a lot, yeah, serves a lot of different purposes. And then after-hours, it would serve for parents to, or to pull up, park, and let their children play while they walk the, the walking path and so forth. The, in order to preserve the trees and the path and so forth, we, we, there's not a lot we look to do over there in the way of, of change, other than, like Dr. Kavasos said, that the discussion about what might be over there in a very simple way, whether it's basketball or footsaw. And then what we might be able to work out in the way of a joint, you know, maintenance venture with the city and so forth, so.
Okay.
Mr. Will Banks, excuse me. So we are also looking for, not only with the city, but other partners, to see if we can add more either recreation space, fields.
Skate park.
I don't know about that one. But, but yeah, so, so that, because this venture, here, we have a balance of property, right? And we've talked a lot about preserving it, but also utilizing it for activity. And there are partners that we're discussing this with, to see if we can something materialize there. Because it is a unique space, and it's a unique configuration. And that's part of what we're trying to design in Carter, is a unique school. That's what the kids, the students loudly told us.
And one of the things that I thought we've done very well with Thornton and Berry and some of the other new schools, is created a sense of community.
Yes.
And make them inviting to the community to draw in. And so that's kind of where I'm going with this, is, you know, that seems like an ample area to help connect with the community and bring them in, and, and give them that sense of pride with this school. So yeah, whatever we can do, I'm all for it.
Right.
Hopefully, we'll have another ally on, on the city council soon that can help facilitate that. So I, I do have one more question now that we're seeing this, and this is a, so one big concern that we've talked about with every one of these projects is increased stacking and flow during pickup and drop-off. We didn't really talk about that here, but it looks like, from what I can see, it's pretty well-designed. Can you, can you speak to that, Mr. Horn, or?
I'll let Beverly take us.
Beverly?
So, our thought is that our, the parents would enter the site on Sherry Street, and they have the ability to loop down to the south through the parking lot. Some may be able to, to drop off right here at the front entry, but then they go to the north and wrap all the way around the building. And so we've got a ton of stacking. You see there's three lanes, actually, from sort of that northwest classroom block all the way around to pass the gym. And then for our bus drop-off, I think we had assumed about ten to twelve. We'll put them, we've got them down at the south. And we do still have to kind of look at different things, because we do have our service yard. The cafeteria is there, the gym is there, and then fine arts as well. So, we'll just have to sort of look at how we can best, you know, sort of protect those areas.
So, do you have a render, so I assume, I don't see the service area for the.
Oh, it's that number thirteen.
Thirteen? Okay, so that's the, that's the ramp for food deliveries and.
Yeah.
And garbage and, okay.
So we may have to look at how we can, you know, fence, or not fence that off, but gate it off or close it off, so that way, when the buses are dropping, they're not right there at the back of the house.
Okay. Looks great.
Let's see. Go back to that, so you kind of see the.
Oh, the stacking of the buses there.
And right now, we have a little short wall that we're sort of showing right there.
Okay. Oh, I see. All right. Perfect. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Dr. Reich?
Thank you, President Mays. Thank you for the information, and it's, it's, it's great to hear it the second time after the first time on committee. Appreciate colleagues' questions. We had very much similar questions on the committee call. A couple of things as a follow-up from our, our committee meeting on this, as well as some additional questions. Can you show everyone what will be the designated tornado storm shelter?
I knew you were going to.
I know.
That's why I came right back to this. So traditionally, when we've designed most of our campuses, you know, your storm shelter can be most anywhere. We typically look at your gym spaces because they're so large and we're able to accommodate. They've already got restrooms. However, for this space, or for this building, we felt like actually that pink area in the center to the south, that's your fine arts areas. So we're doing our calculations, and we're going to get that to be our storm shelter area. So it's more central, and so when those kids are coming down those three stories, they're able to sort of redirect themselves right there.
Perfect. Very good. And, and I, I do want to reiterate now, as on committee, I really appreciate the intentionality of the, the groupings of the different content areas that students are going to be experiencing. Very, very efficient in that process, both from the student perspective as well as the, the teacher, faculty perspective. So, I think that's really going to enhance the opportunities for learning, which is what this is all about. So, I, I do appreciate that. And also, the, the focus of trying to combine indoor-outdoor, that natural light as much as possible. It's so, so essential. Anybody that works in, in a basement that never sees the light of day can appreciate that very much. What is the, the capacity difference between this and the current Carter Junior High?
Yeah, I was going to say.
We've, we've actually designed this from the start to, to allow for the current capacity. And, and then we've looked at the demographics for the campus for the next ten years to see, just to make sure that it, it will fit for us. And so, we've taken some other steps, as we shared in the committee report, to, to utilize this building in a much more efficient manner, to, similar to what we do with the CTC, where the teachers would, during off periods, they, those classrooms could be vacated. They would have a place to go where they could utilize, and Beverly's got that pull-up here in the, in the center. And I'm going to call it blue, so if it's something other, I apologize. But, but in the very center, that would be a place where teachers could go. They would have a cubicle or, or a workstation, similar to like what we have here in this building, for example, where they could go and hotel for an hour or two, if they have to need, if they need, have a need to meet with parents or make private phone calls, there are rooms to be able to do that. There are conference spaces to be able to meet with parents and, and have hard meetings, things like that. So, it will allow us to utilize the building in a much more efficient way. And we, we really. And we, we really, we really dug into that because, you know, if you have classrooms open for two to three hours a day, with as many classrooms as we have, essentially you lose 15 classrooms worth of instruction every day. So by doing this, we, we, we really tighten it up and we utilize it, we, we won't utilize it to 100%, but it gets us into a much higher percentage of utilization, and so this will be a very different junior high school than we built before.
Yeah, it's, I think it's, it's gonna be great. So two, two final things, I don't remember our discussion in, in committee, I, I had mentioned, and I think it was somewhat related to the, the park space, and current Carter, don't know that they're still there, but they had a big, like, community gardens kind of movement, so is, is that a thought for that area, or is that already in, in play somewhere else in the design on the campus?
Well, oh, I'm sorry, and she kind of looked at me and said, "Community garden?", and I, I was hearing garden, but you're right, now the community garden, we, that's, for the most part at Carter has, I won't say it's been abandoned, that's been picked up by the church next door for the most part, but, but there was still some expression from the students to have things like that, and so that courtyard could absolutely become an element for having gardens, or even across the drive, if you could switch to that, you, you see that there's area across between the creek itself and the drive, there's an immense amount of area there that we could create.
Right.
Small gardens, if you will, raised beds and things, so.
Yeah.
And that, and that was one of the things they talked about, was making sure that we have space for that kind of thing, so we could absolutely support that.
And, and I would say that, you know, looking at partnerships, that would be a great opportunity to talk to Parks and Rec, talk to the city and some other community organizations to, to really build a sense of community there with that surrounding community, because I'm sure there are lots of green thumbs around there that would be very interested, and that'd bring people together, so just, just all about that.
Absolutely, Dr. Rice, last, I think it's important to note, I think the only thing we've really committed to is that parking area there?
Right.
Because we, because we need it, and I think it would be efficient, but we intentionally left that because there's so much active discussion on what could be the uniqueness in that space, it's, it's a really open, nice space, and with a lot of enhancement, can be really unique for Carter Junior High.
Yeah.
And so, that's why it's, it's, it's not built out, if you will, because it's very active, and, and I think we take our time, to your point, to make sure it's something that can sustain, that has community buy-in, that has partnership for a long time, not just a year or two, and that's what we're working on.
Yeah, well, and I, I think that's great, and I'm just, I'm an advocate for tying kids educationally to nature whenever possible, it's so sad that there's so many kids, no matter what efforts have been put into it, where they literally think that everything comes from a grocery store. And the empowerment, I mean, I've seen it with my own eyes that they get when they see things that they put in the ground, and, "Oh, wow, I can take this and I can, oh, this is a tomato, I made a tomato", you know, I've seen that at the elementary level, it's, it's, it's just, educationally, it's a great thing. Final question, we, we had discussions about the watershed and what the city may or may not consider, so it, it sounds like that's all been mitigated, or is that still a can of worms that we're still working through with the city as far as while you're building this?
It's still very fluid.
Still very fluid.
Still very fluid.
Pardon the pun.
Yeah, yeah, so, no, it, yeah, it, it is an ongoing discussion, it is very fluid, and, and we, there will be, I'm sure, comments and, and, you know, from the city staff as we go along, because we're only at schematic design phase, but, but by not impacting it other than just to preserve it, that will help us a great deal, and, and because the city is responsible, has been responsible thus far, with it being a park, to, to create what's there. So I, we're expecting that we'll receive very little comment about anything that we might have to do other than preserve what they've put in place, that's the expectation.
And we will have to still do detention, and, and we will definitely try and make sure that we've got it all worked out.
Yeah, and, and I, I want to add that this is, every project is unique, right? So this one, we're, we are adding volume here of a building, a parking, a field, et cetera, so it, it will require appropriate modification for that.
Yes.
So, just to be clear, it's not like we're rebuilding Thornton and the same kind of, you know, size or whatever, but this is a lot more.
And I think Dr. Kavasos is important to remember what we talked about with the city, and, and Dr. Kavasos has been able to secure a commitment with the city to bring on their third-party engineer to, to bring him on very early in the game?
Good.
So that we can hopefully have those discussions much earlier, so that we can address the concerns of the board and not be surprised with, you know, additional costs later on, so we're very appreciative of the city for doing that.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And hopefully, whatever those recommendations are, will be, to your point, the expectation will be kind of where we're hoping it'll land, instead of a, a sticker shock surprise of, "Oh, well, you gotta do this and this and this also." And, so, from their studies, from your observations, what you said as far as the, 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 the current that goes through there after a rain, it, it, it is not the same as some of the other areas that we've seen around town?
No, you know, it's not, obviously, it's, it's still is very impactful, you know, I'm sure the neighbors on the other side of Sherry Street would say they'd like for something to be addressed, but.
Yeah.
I know that, the city expressed that they're, they're looking, they've been looking at that for a long time, and so there may at some point in the future be, we, there may be some request, you know, by the city or others to, to help mitigate that in some way, I can't foresee that, or we can't foresee what they would do at this point.
Right, right.
But it is still essentially a drainage easement that, that goes through there.
Yeah.
But, but again, and when it does manage a lot of water, when we have a large rain, but it, right now, it will handle what, what comes that way, the, the earlier slide she put up showed the, and you might go back to that, Beverly?
With the water.
Showed the bounds of, you know, showed the bounds of, of that floodway?
Yeah.
And what's the 100-year floodplain and so forth?
Yeah.
And so, much of it, you know, is contained right now, the biggest part of what is volatile is that to the east of Sherry, or to the west of Sherry Street, I should've said, sorry.
And it does drain, you see the path there, it drains to, to the north, and it's got a pretty good.
Yeah, so I, I would hope that they don't, I, it just doesn't seem to me that there's, with, with these maps, that we're going to impact it so greatly according to this water flow to the north, that's, that's where I was getting at, and I don't know if the city's done any mitigation efforts with those people as far as buyouts, or, you know, with, if that's the current floodplain map, obviously it's a hot issue all over town, so I hope those citizens are okay, but the, the, the point is, from our perspective, sure, we want to do everything that i- is appropriate, but not necessarily over-engineered ideas for things that we don't have anything to do with, so.
We will definitely, we'll definitely have to, you know, to mitigate the water that, like Dr. Kavasos mentioned, that we're going to, to, to provide, I guess, to, that would come into that creek, and so very likely, we know that we're gonna have to do some attention to the, to the north of the field, we may also have to do some detention, you know, underneath the field, that'll, that's, that's kind of what we're gonna be looking at with our civil engineers as we go further along, that's our safety net, if, so to speak, to be able to continue to go further to the south under the field, but, and possibly even under drives, but, but that's, that's how we would handle that, so we're hoping that we, it won't be enormous, but we don't, we also don't want an enormous, deep, open hole, if you will?
Yeah.
You know, with a large block wall around it, defense around it, and like Mr. Hogg referenced earlier, we'd rather have it be a little more subtle and try to contain things underground if we can.
All right, those are the questions I have, thank you again, I, I think it's, it's absolutely a unique design for Arlington Schools, Junior High, I'm, I'm excited to see this thing move forward, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and thank you for your committee for assisting with the review of this. Thank you, Ms. Fornoff, thank you, Mr. Hill, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I'm moving to the next agenda item.
I'll take that, he's a handsome man.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. The thing I just want to add to this is spending quite a bit of time at Carter Junior High, things that I've said for years, but the, the football field, I'm so happy for them to be able to get a football field.
Yeah, me too.
That's going to make it safe for all of the players on the field. The gym, I'm so happy that they're getting a gym where it doesn't really feel like you're part of the game because you're so close to that gym floor. The low ceilings, the library, where I've had plenty of PTA meetings, community member meetings in the library, I'm so happy that they're going to have this nice, big space to do that, because the one thing you said was about them being able to keep their culture, and there definitely is a culture for that school amongst many other schools, but the ability to be able to take what they already have and make it better, for me, is more exciting. And then the location, so for me, all of these are big equitable things, and I'm very happy to see that we're doing that here with Carter Junior High in East Arlington. I do have one question, and that is, on the third floor, what are those sped rooms going to be for?
They're not sped rooms, they're actually CTE, and so there's three, are you talking about the yellow and then the?
Yes.
So we've got language, language classrooms, and then those are actually for CTE programs, and I, I think it's C T H E I?
C T H E I, that's correct.
Okay, so not sped?
No, 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 no.
Okay, just wondering what they were gonna do on the third floor.
Oh, yeah, again, another one that we'll have to update.
Okay, okay, that answers my question, thank you. And then the one last thing, the space for our teachers, I think that the only thing that they have to use that for is to go someplace and breathe.
That's true, yeah.
Give them a space to do the same as what we're trying to give our students, so, once again, thank you very much for the presentation.
Yes, thank you as much.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Okay, this is a discussion action item, Mrs. McMura.
President Mays, if there are no other questions, I, I would like to make a motion. I move to approve the schematic design for Carter Junior High School as presented by Corrigan Architects.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. McMura, a second by Mr. Chapa, any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next, next discussion action item is consider the district's School Health Advisory Council recommendation of curriculum materials for human sexuality instruction. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Mays, and this evening we bring this item for your consideration, this is a, a required presentation and process, and we have Dr. Hill and Ms. Star from our Shack Committee, so, Dr. Hill, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, President Mays, Dr. Kavasos on board, and thank you all for having us for this opportunity to just kind of present to you where we are with regard to the health curriculum materials. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce Lisa Star, she'll be doing a part of this production, presentation, not a production.
I know.
Well, who knows, after Kelly, so it may be a production. And Eric White, our director of athletics, who kind of oversaw the Shack Committee and this part, as well as Shay Stavenhaven, who's from our curriculum and instruction departments, they really helped us out with a lot of the processes for, for adopting new curriculum, so we'll get right into it. Just a little background, Proclamation 2022 called for an adoption of new health and physical education instruction and materials, which included materials for human sexuality. When we brought Update 118 to you a few months ago, that, that policy revision required that the board adopt, adopt a resolution and charge the Shack to oversee this process. That resolution was approved at the March 10th meeting. When we were doing that policy review, we had no idea that this, that we would be here because it, it kind of, the timing was that they were coming together, but we just didn't see it. So the requirements are that the instructional materials must be based on advice from the Shack, that it be suitable for subject and grade level that is intended, that it be reviewed by academic experts, in this case, our health teachers, and that it covers the TEES. So just a process review, we had the health teachers review three different options, and they landed on a selection, we put it out for community feedback, then we presented it to the Shack, the Shack reviewed that, and then they had their, approved that recommendation in one of their two meetings, and then we're here tonight to make a recommendation to the board. Last slide for me is that the academic experts, who are health teachers, reviewed again the three different options, Goodheart, Wilcox was one publisher, Savas, and then McGraw-Hill. They created a rubric to, to measure each one of these options through, and those rubrics included much more, but it just highlighted a few of them here, alignment to the standards, differentiated assessment opportunities, how the curriculum and instruction align, teacher resources, and then just the organization and layout of, of the resource itself. And so, the book that was landed on, or the resource that was landed on was Texas Health Skills for High Schools by Goodheart and Wilcox, and that's the publisher that we landed on, again, it was lined with the TEES, it was only TEA-approved adoption list, very age-appropriate for the students, what was really impressive to the committee was that it was hard copy and digital, and I think Ms. Star will speak to a little bit to, to the digital part with the parent access, and then available both in Spanish and English. And so that was a selection, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Star, she'll just talk through what the Shack response was to that, so.
Thank you for having us here today, I also wanted to just introduce one of our committee members who's here, that's Stephen Walters here, so I want to thank him for being here as well, and Eric has been really great in just guiding us through this process that we've had. So we had two Shack meetings, our Shack is comprised of community members, as you all know, March 28th and March 30th, we did, we went through the review process and we discussed the three options that were given, and then were presented with recommended text resources, and the one that we chose was the Goodheart Wilcox, it actually is the only one that met all the TEES, and so it is the TDA-recommended or approved curriculum, the resources are available in English and Spanish, which of course is extremely important to our students and to also our teachers, the resources are readily available, they'll be ready to go for this coming school year, and also it provides a digital access for parents, and we did think that that was very important, that our parents can choose to log in, they can see what their students are being taught at any time, they'll have full access to that, and especially in our, how we get all of our information digitally these days, we did think that that was very important, and that's also available in English and Spanish as well. And we had the support of the health teachers in our district, this is the one that they felt was most appropriate, it is age-appropriate, and they think it is a very good fit for the classroom, so we are here, I'm here representing as the chair of the Shack to approve, for you to approve our recommendation of Texas Health Skills for High Schools as the district's health and physical education instructional materials, that is again by the Goodheart Wilcox, that's the curriculum, to include materials for human sexuality. And if there are any questions, I could probably answer a couple of them, but Dr. Hill and Eric can answer most of them.
Thank you, Ms. Star, thank you, Dr. Hill. Questions from trustees, Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays, Ms. Star, thank you for your participation in your committee's work, and Dr. Hill as well, I just have a couple of questions, so I just want to be clear that this book has been approved by the state as meeting all of the state's standards with respect to this subject matter.
That's correct.
And the committee that you are on is comprised of community members, parents?
Yes.
And were parents able to fully participate in that process?
So the Shack members, it is a, as you know, it's a, all community members, these, we had two meetings, we had one on a Monday and one on a Wednesday, they were publicized, they were put out there for, they were open meetings to the public that anyone could come, there was also, and I think Eric can maybe speak to this, a, a form for people to submit their questions online, and we did not receive any feedback from the public through that avenue.
So there was, so parents were involved in this?
Yes.
Parent voices were heard?
Mm-hmm.
Do you feel like the parent voice was respected and incorporated into the decision-making process?
Absolutely.
Okay, those are all the questions I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa, Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Mays, and, and I'm gonna ask a little same questions as Mr. Chapa, and thank you, Ms. Star, Shack's taken on a whole new level of importance in the last couple of years for this, so I appreciate it, I know on that, so, a- as Mr. Chapa said, this was, it meets all the TEES standards, and it's also been approved by the State Board of Education, they actually rejected this textbook and then brought it back and then approved it, correct? Is that your understanding?
That's my understanding, Eric, do you have anything, or Dr.? Eric, do you have anything, or Dr. Hill?
Yes. That's correct. And this would be taught in our health classes, correct?
At the high school level.
And health is not a required class.
Health is not a required class.
So a parent would opt into a health class and then decide. Anytime a parent can review a textbook. Listen, textbooks have created a lot of publicity right now. And from, you know, Google searches last week with this, I haven't seen anything super controversial on Goodheart, was it Goodheart Wilcox?
Yes, Goodheart Wilcox.
From that, Texas Health Skills on that. This meets all the state education code requirements. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. I do not see any other questions. I like the digital approach as well, particularly for parents that work and may not have time to read a book, but you can log on and listen if you want to listen.
Well, as Mr. Chapa was saying, I do think that was really, as parents reviewing this, that was huge for us. A lot of times, I know at the elementary school, there's things taught, and you can check it out from, that's how it was when my kids were in elementary. You can come check out the material and take it home. It's just an extra step that a lot of parents, just not accessible for them.
Right. Thank you. Well, I want to say thank you once again, Ms. Star and Dr. Hill. Thank you very much, Mr. Walter, and your other people that sat on the committee. Thank you to them who are out here this evening. Okay, this is also a discussion action item. Mrs. Fowler?
Thank you, President Mays. If there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the School Health Advisory Council's recommendation of Texas Health Skills for High Schools as a district's health and physical education instructional materials to include materials for human sexuality.
I second that motion.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Mrs. Fowler, a second by Mr. Will Banks. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative. Motion passes. Thank you once again for your Shack service.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is our COVID-19 School Operations Update. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And as been customary for a while now, we bring a brief COVID-19 School Operations Update as an update for the Board. So I'll turn it back over to Dr. Hill.
Thank you. We'll get right into this update. Again, this has been standard throughout the year, and so we'll just get right into some of the mitigation efforts that have continued to be part of what we're doing. Again, the Arlington Fire Department still has their clinic open at 2920 South Cooper, Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 4:00. No appointment necessary. Again, we have been asked by Tarrant County Public Health to provide space for vaccine opportunities at locations. And again, Tarrant County Public Health did their research across the area and identified two locations that were, the vaccine wasn't as concentrated in. And so they reached out to the district and wanted to know if we would allow them to, you know, use that space to park their bus on and offer those vaccine opportunities. I presented to you at the last Board meeting that we had those, I'm sorry, the first two dates were February 10th and February 17th. That was a dose one opportunity. The follow-up was originally scheduled for March 21st and 23rd, but there was some communication issues, and so we had to reschedule that. And it was rescheduled for the dates that you see here, March 29th and March 30th. And we have completed those with, I'm sorry, we allowed the public health to use our facility, our parking lots for that opportunity, and it's been completed. Again, our test mitigation, A I S D testing center is still open Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and those dates there, we continue to require symptomatic individuals to stay home and to get tested if necessary. The testing data you can see here continues to trend downward. At the week ending April the 1st, you can see there with the number of staff, student, and the percent positive cases that it's there. And the public health site, again, for the first time in a long time, the community spread level is at low. And you can see the, all of the indicators, the seven-day average of virus spread, hospitalizations, as well as the seven-day moving average, all continue to trend downwards. And you can see those dates. It was a little hard to find some of the data on the public health website because, again, I think the trend is downward, and so we just used the most, the latest information that we could find. On our A I S D dashboard through last Friday, April the 1st, you can see the number of cases for staff, the number of cases for students, and the number of cases for visitors. And again, we continue to update that dashboard every day by 5:00 PM each day. It's getting a little bit easier now to update because the cases, again, are trending downward. And here's just a visual representation of that. And you can see from the peak back in January all the way to where we are now, last Friday. The next steps, we'll continue to monitor staff and student attendance and effectively support campuses where necessary. But again, at this point, we're at a good place. So we'll take any questions that you may have about where we are.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Do I have any trustees with questions? Yes, Mrs. McMura?
Thank you, Dr. Hill. I'm very grateful that we're still on that downward trend. Should a teacher or staff member test positive for COVID, they are still eligible for those days covered, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McMura. Mr. Hogg?
Yeah, thank you, President Mays. And, Mr. Hill, let me ask, do we have any more mobile vax clinics planned for the year from Tarrant County Health?
At this point, I'm not aware of.
Okay, thank you. One other question, you know, an employee, you know, the numbers are so small now at this point. Is there a need to continue updating, or do we suspend it until the numbers get to a certain level and then start updating again on the dashboard?
I think we could definitely monitor, and if there's a need, we could, you know, continue with the updating. But right now, as you said, with low community spread and...
I see something from Dr. Cavassos.
Yes, are you talking about our dashboard or this presentation?
I guess it could be both.
Yes, so...
I mean, I think still sending the information to the Board, but the time of presentation...
We are, we are at that point where we would, we would be, not be presenting this update unless we need to, because something changes. The only, there's nothing that's changed other than it's gone down, down, down. So if that's okay with the Board, we would, we would not be presenting this anymore.
I don't know what my colleagues feel. I don't see anything, and I don't hear much discussion over even the dashboards even more. And I know, listen, I know what staff time is right now. I mean, you still have to monitor and do those things, but updating for maybe ones or twos, twos here and there, I think it's something to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Okay, I don't see any other trustees with questions. I have one question, Dr. Hill. For the Vaxmobile that belongs to Tarrant County?
It's, I don't know if it belongs to the county, but we've been contacted through the county to partner with them.
Right, okay. And for the two places where they will be, at Anderson and Sam Houston, was there a strategic reason of where they would be placed?
Yes, so the county did some research, and in their research, they determined that those two zip codes were, the vaccine was not, the vaccine availability was not good in those areas, and so that's why they selected those areas.
Okay.
Underserved, I think, was the word that they used.
Okay. And is the district at any of these schools or in the area putting out information about this, or is this, once again, just being handled by Tarrant County?
So the county is providing the district with the information, and we are making that available.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. There's no recommendations from this, so thank you, Dr. Hill.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is the Consent Agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the Consent Agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the Consent Agenda? Okay, I see none. So seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mrs. McMura, a second by Mr. Hogg. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative. Motion passes. Thank you very much. We will now move to discussion item A. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring a House Bill 3 District Improvement Plan progress update like we do at our Board meetings. So we've administered some benchmarks, and we're getting close to the end of the year here. So this is our latest review of data. So I will turn it over to Dr. Lopez.
President Mays, members of the Board, Dr. Cavassos, thank you for your time this evening. Dr. Brown and Dr. Worts and I will be providing an update on the Texas Academic Accountability System, including upcoming changes for the 2022 cycle, as well as a progress update on the House Bill 3 and the District Improvement Plan targets as it relates to outcomes from our recent spring STAR benchmark. So the A to F Accountability System launched in the spring of 2018, and since that inaugural year, there has been some tumultuous and unprecedented changes across the nation. And like most other industries, education has experienced some setbacks, and that's evidenced by our student performance outcomes, specifically on our STAR last year. Regardless, the Accountability System used to evaluate and rate campuses and districts has predominantly remained unchanged. I will quickly review the A to F system and then just point out some of the changes the T E A has made for the upcoming cycle. So the A to F system consists of the three domains. The better of Domain 1 or 2 accounts for 70% of the overall score, and then Domain 3 is the remaining 30%. And this methodology remains unchanged. So although the methodology for the calculation remains unchanged, there are some changes to criteria for Domain 1 and Domain 3. There is a reinstatement of Domain 2A and a modification to overall rating labels. So I will cover each of these changes in the upcoming slides. Start with Domain 1. You may recall that for elementaries, that's 100% STAR. For junior highs, it's 100% STAR. And then for high schools and districts, it's 40% STAR, 40% CCMR, and then 20% graduation. The change here is for the CCMR component, and it's been updated to include the newest version of the Texas Success Initiative Assessment, the TSI-A2, and as a means to meet the TSI criteria to earn a CCMR point. I'm going to move into Domain 2. That's comprised of the two parts. A is academic growth, and B is relative performance. So this visual is probably familiar. This is associated with the determination for Domain 2A academic growth. And it takes the prior year performance level, the current year performance level, and then the numerical value from one year growth, one year to the next, into consideration when it awards points for students. This was not in the system last year, spring of 2021, because there was no prior year in STAR 2020. It was not able to be administered to any students in the state. So fortunately, this has been reinstated because we were able to take STAR and E O C last spring in 2021. We knew pretty immediately, and seeing our 2021 results, that this domain should be our focus, primarily as a responsibility to help our students recover from their, the COVID learning loss that they experienced. And then far secondarily, seems like an obvious opportunity in the mostly unchanged system to be able to mathematically stay afloat when the system isn't going to accommodate for the learning loss by adjusting any cut points or targets. So Commissioner Morath himself has recently stated that T E A is aware that students across the state have experienced this learning loss, and that most likely campuses and districts are not going to be able to fully recover in Domain 1 this year to their results from the, from the pre-COVID days. He's also mentioned that, that 2A is the area of the system that would measure the student growth that most campuses or districts could use for that 70% portion. And the methodology for this 2A remains unchanged, so it's going to take that prior year performance level, which was from spring 2021, the current year performance level for the upcoming spring 2022, and then the numerical growth from that one last year to this year in order to determine and award growth points to students. The second part of Domain 2 is B. This is the relative performance, and this visual is probably familiar to you as well. And this is associated with calculating the relative performance of campuses and districts while taking their socioeconomic status into consideration. This clip of the relative performance chart shows the cut points that A I S D will use to scale their raw score in Domain 2B. The methodology for 2B remains unchanged, as do the cut points. Moving into Domain 3, this places students into subgroups based on demographics and programs, and then analyzes the results on various components, academic achievement in reading and math, academic growth, CCMR, Tellpass, et cetera. And then this visual shows you the targets for each subgroup in each of those components, and the methodology and the targets remain unchanged. There is a change to Domain 3 in a few areas related to criteria. And so the participation rates will only be reported for reading and math. The CCMR component will be updated to include that same TSI-A2 test that was updated on Domain 1. And then the ELP component, which includes Tellpass, will be updated to look back to their prior year score, going all the way back to 2018 if necessary, to determine growth in their English, English language acquisition. So Tellpass 2022 would be the current year, prior year would be 2021. If a student doesn't have a score from 2021, they'll go look back and see if they had one from 2020. If not, look back to 2019, and then calculate the growth from that. So the A to F system scales the raw scores so that they align to typical A to F numerical standards that educators are used to. The methodology, scaling process, cut scores to do this are all going to remain unchanged. And overall campus and district calculations that are going to remain unchanged will have an adjustment to the label that is associated with the overall score. So campuses and districts that receive a mathematical score that aligns to an A, B, or C will receive the corresponding A, B, or C label. But campuses or districts that receive a D or F score that's aligned to the typical D or F will not receive a D or F label or rating, and they will be labeled as not rated. So before I transition into benchmark results, were there any questions about the Accountability System or any of the changes that I've reviewed that will take place in this upcoming 2022 cycle?
I don't see any questions.
Okay. So I will now review the progress update pertaining to House Bill 3 and the District Improvement Plan targets as it relates to the outcomes from the spring STAR benchmark that we just took. I'm going to start with reading and then report out on the various levels, and then I'll move into mathematics. Before I go into the overall district reading goals, I just want to orient you to the table. So this table will show up on the next eight to 10 slides. So each table, the first column is the demographic category. That's going to be your... That's going to be your subgroup. The second column, that pink-orange kind of fill that's labeled baseline 2021, that's the percent of students at or above the approaches grade level, based on the 2021 STAR results from last year. The third column is the Year One 2022 target that we set. The fourth and fifth are CA One and CA Two, and those are the results from those two assessments. The column that has the green around it is the latest benchmark results. And then the final column, which is STAR, is not going to be populated. So our goal was to increase the percent of students approaching grade level expectations on reading to 64%. And we are close with 63% on benchmark results. Some of our subgroups are slightly above their target for their specific subgroup, and some are just slightly below. Get more granular and go into specific grade levels. So our third grade reading, our goal was to increase the percentage of students approaching grade level expectations to 61%. And we're halfway towards our goal there, increasing from the baseline of 57%, but not quite to that 61%. We have dropped in performance on this from CA Two. The benchmark does cover an entire year's worth of material. It's a STAR released test, whereas the CA Two was given about 10 weeks into the school year. Moving into eighth grade reading, our goal is to increase the percentage at approaching grade level expectations to 73%. And we have not quite reached that Year One goal. We're at 68%, a small gain from CA Two. An appropriate analysis of the eighth grade reading can't be accomplished, however, due to the fact that the assessment results don't include the full population of students since there were conspicuously invalid test scores removed. Our English One goal was to increase the approaches grade level percentage to 64%. And after the benchmark, we have reached that goal with a 65%. Most of our subgroups are above their specific subgroup target. And then for English Two, our goal is to increase the percentage of students approaching grade level expectations to 67%. And we have exceeded that goal with 71% approaching or better on the English Two benchmark. Every subgroup but one was above their specific subgroup target. I'm going to go ahead and move into the math portion. So the overall district math goal was to, oh, sorry, increase the percent of students approaching grade level expectations to 58%. And we've reached that goal based on the benchmark results. So most of our subgroups being above their specific subgroup target. Bigger, we had bigger gains to make in math. Narrowing down specifically into third grade math, our goal was to increase the percent of students approaching grade level expectations to 52%. And we have reached that goal based on the benchmark results with, again, most of the subgroups reaching their specific subgroup target. For eighth grade math, our goal was to increase to 57% of students approaching grade level expectations. And we have made quite a gain from CA Two. We're right at 54% on the benchmark results, and that's up from the 39% that we had in this subject area last year. In Algebra One, our goal was to reach 67% of students approaching grade level expectations. And we're not quite there. We're at 63%. However, an appropriate analysis of these Algebra One results cannot be accomplished due to the fact that assessment results don't include the full population of students since the conspicuously invalid test scores were removed. Before I transition into the overall accountability progress update, were there any questions related to the benchmark results? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Mays and Dr. Lopez. Thank you for this data. And things look to be pretty positive in terms of what the benchmark is showing versus our Year One goals on a lot of areas. There are areas where on the reading where we're just slightly below. But there, for clarification, given when this benchmark was done, and you said the benchmark covers a full year's worth of instruction, there's still quite a bit of instruction left to do.
On some.
Okay. So how indicative is this 68 to what we would see on a STAR result at the end? Or with the additional learning that's yet to happen over the month of March and April, will that, is there a potential for that to dramatically increase or increase by enough to meet the goal?
So historical data shows a strong correlation between benchmark and STAR results. It's not a perfect model, however, and we don't have historical data that takes into account a pandemic. So I can't really state with confidence how much more growth I would expect beyond this point in time from benchmark to what's going to happen on the STAR or the EOC.
That's fair.
Yeah.
You know, on math, it's a great story. I can see where kids being out of school, difficult to have instruction, and the outcomes for those students were horrible based on our STAR results during the pandemic. But now that they're back in class, we definitely see efforts paying off from just having them in the classroom, and we've made significant strides. You know, I'm still concerned about eighth grade math. It was a huge, you know, it was our most precipitous drop during the pandemic. We've come a long way from 39% with the base, you know, our 2021 STAR results to 54% as predicted by the benchmark today. And just a little bit more to go to hit our target. What, if anything, have we done in terms of looking at strategies to take this data and actually provide interventions for the things that it's showing that kids are still struggling with in terms of?
Mr. Will Banks, I am so sorry to interrupt. There's some technical problems right now, so no one's hearing or seeing anything that we're doing. So we're going to take about a three-minute break and hopefully everything can reboot.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. We are back online. I think we left with Mr. Will Banks. You can just pick up where you left off.
Thank you, President Mays. Nice to join us, Dr. Rice. So yes, Dr. Lopez, I was asking, you know, looking at our eighth grade math, it's the growth that we've seen from our STAR results is phenomenal, but it's not quite where we need it to be for our Year One target. So based on what the benchmark informed us, and I'm sure there are certain areas that students universally did poorly, and what are we doing for interventions? And maybe Dr. Wertz can speak to that.
I was actually going to say that Dr. Brown or Dr. Wertz would be more appropriate to answer that question. And so if you don't mind waiting or pausing it until the end of the presentation?
We will wait till the end.
Okay.
I am done.
And that is my fault for saying, are there any questions at the wrong time?
So thank you, Dr. Lopez. Continue.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Mrs. McMorrow?
I'm so sorry. Are we waiting to ask questions? Because we can, we can do that. I can wait. They can wait.
Thank you, Mrs. McMorrow.
No problem. Yes, ma'am, is that okay?
As you can continue. Absolutely.
So after each curriculum assessment or benchmark, we run an accountability process on student scores that uses as many of the A to F rules as we can apply to make a projection of the accountability scores and the ratings for campuses and then the district. So the projections for the district based on the benchmark results are displayed here. Domain One, which is, this is the district's calculation, so Domain One is going to be STAR, CCMR, and graduation. And that is currently scaling to a 66. Domain Two A growth is scaling to a 65. And then the Domain Two B relative performance is scaling to a 73. You'll notice that the 73 is bold. That's the best of One, Two A, or Two B. And so that's going to account for the 70% in the final overall score. Then Domain Three scales to a 66, and that's that remaining 30%. So while the process for the rules and the calculations of the A to F system is aligned to what TEA would do, we don't have all of the details that TEA has. So an example would be our Tellpass score, scores are recycled in from the prior year because we haven't taken that yet, and we don't have an assessment that projects what it will be. So we recycle in from prior year the Tellpass piece of Domain Three. Former sped students, if they come to us from another district, we don't know whether they were sped or not, and so we cannot place them into the appropriate subgroup. So just little details that we will not ever have all of the information to run it exactly as it is. So the model's not perfect, but it is a estimate for what our overall grade would be based on the benchmark results at this time. And so the overall grade there for the district would be a 71. And then finally, I've just put this information up there with a lot less detail. It's the same numbers and information. It's just a little bit more to the point there. So I'm going to step away to the podium and hand this over to Dr. Wertz.
All right. Good evening. Nice to see everybody. So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to focus on what the trends and some of the supports that the curriculum staff are working on to support campuses. And then at the end of my portion, I'll turn it over to Dr. Brown. She'll talk specifically about interventions and things that are happening on the campus, which I think is a little bit of a reference to your question. So at the central office level, what we do is we analyze the results to try to understand what's actually happening in the classroom in terms of mastery of standards. And we try to create documents and supports to help teachers to mitigate some of the gaps that might exist in the short amount of time that happens between when the benchmark is given and when students actually take STAR. We call this boot camp. So boot camps are actually designed to be responsive to trends. And what we do is we create lessons and activities for teachers to focus on that are centered around those trends, and they are available on Curriculum Central and in other platforms. They really centered around small group instruction interventions. We provide mini lessons that can be done in 15-minute segments. And we also have some 60-minute lessons for classrooms that have some trends that really impact the entire classroom. And also teachers who want students working on activities in rotations, they can use the activities to do that as well. I thought I would just share with you briefly, from a really high level, what some of the overall trends were in each of the content areas, just to give you an idea. I will say that if you were to get down deeply into the data, it is broken down into strands even, and there are very, there's much, much more specificity. But I wanted to give you like the broad idea. So really, when it comes to reading and English, there are really three main areas where kids continue to need support. And by the way, these three areas, it's very common. These are usually the most challenging for students, and they're really focused around analyzing and understanding informational texts, texts across different genres, and literary texts. And really, because the focus in these areas, if you're to look at the data, is really around comprehension and understanding what literary elements exist across these different types of texts, and how do you analyze them and understand them? So in the boot camp, you can see on the right-hand side, we provide a document for teachers just to remind them what are the eligible Texas essential knowledge and skills that actually can show up on the assessment and how the state actually looks and breaks those down. We provide them many lessons like I described, and then there are I-station resources for Texas STAR-aligned lessons and STAR practice for kids who need that kind of assistance. In math, I broke it down into two sections, elementary and secondary, because they're a little bit different. And one more caveat I need to mention, of course, is that these specific concepts are not in every grade level. They progressively, as you know, become more challenging as they get older. But in elementary, these are the areas in math. It's computations and algebraic relationships. And then the areas are really focused around numbers and operations, algebraic reasoning, proportionality, and then expressions, equations, and relationships. And the bolted information on the right-hand side of the column is just a list of all the different concepts and topics that are embedded in the boot camps for mathematics in grades three through six at the elementary levels. In secondary math, and when I say secondary, I'm really focusing on seventh and eighth grade math, and then Algebra One, the trends are in two areas. In seventh and eighth grade math, the trends are around proportionality and expressions, equations, and relationships. And then in Algebra One, it's really around linear functions, equations, and inequalities. And on the right-hand side, again, is a list of just the different concepts that are embedded in the lessons that are provided to teachers on Curriculum Central in the boot camp format. So some of the things that we've started really thinking about as a team is to try to understand really what are the big trends across the district in terms of areas of strength and areas of opportunity. And we are in the process of trying to understand the strategies that we have been implementing across the district over the course of the year, which ones have the greatest impact and are offering a return on our investment. I think the question that you asked earlier, Mr. Will Banks, regards to math is something we're processing. What is actually causing that growth to happen? Because whatever that is, we want to keep doing it. And so we're analyzing, we're in the process of analyzing and talking about the strategies that we have in our District Improvement Plan right now to see how they're actually impacting and aligned to STAR, I mean, to students' outcomes on STAR. Once we finalize that narrow, we want to really focus on narrowing that effort. And the reason I say that is because we realize that even an adult, and just like a student, can't absorb and change all of their practice all at one time. It takes time. And so what we've been discussing is what are the, what I call the biggest rocks, the most important strategies that we can directly see the level of implementation that's happening in the classroom and the relationship of that implementation to student outcomes so that we can perpetuate them across the system. Part of that is also understanding where the bright spots are, where implementation is happening really well, and what the relationship is with their student outcomes. And also really doing some reconsideration of resources. So if there are some strategies we know are actually having a bigger impact, dedicating more time and resources to those things. The last thing I wanted to share with you is that, as you know, there is a full-blown STAR redesign that's happening. This is actually legislatively driven, and I thought I would just share with you briefly what some of those changes are, because my team is actively working on making those adjustments so teachers have the resources to teach and provide students with support so they're ready next year when that STAR happens. So one of the things that you'll notice if, when the new STAR comes out is there will be an incorporation of cross-curricular passages. So students that are reading in reading, like taking a reading class, a reading assessment, will actually be reading passages that are focused around social studies and science concepts. And so that has to be taken into consideration when we're designing instruction. There will also be non-multiple choice questions that will be embedded in an effort to mirror some of the questions that teachers would interact with their students. And so there'll be more open-ended answers. And then, of course, there will be no more standalone writing in fourth and seventh grade. They will be focusing on evidence-based writing, and it'll be integrated into every reading assessment, grades three through, well, 10. And then finally, just one last thing is there'll be, we do have some resources that TA has provided us to help us. They've given us some sample items. They've helped us understand which types of questions are going to be parts of which subject areas. And then they've also provided some new blueprints. So we'll be focusing on all that actually over the course of this spring and the summer to make sure that our resources are updated for teachers. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Brown, and she'll share what's happening in the campus.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. So we'll talk just a little bit about campus response to the data. You've heard from Dr. Lopez, who walked us through our benchmark assessment data and new accountability processes. And Dr. Wertz talked about the central office level in terms of how they identified trends. And so now we're drilling down to individual campuses to see how they're responding to the data. So we've had a very strong and targeted focus on student growth this year. We knew this was going to be our biggest bang for the buck, just considering the data we saw from our spring 21, that if we focus on growing every student, we're going to be able to see large dividends. So I'm going to just share a couple of numbers with you to just kind of share how that growth has looked over the course of the year. So as you think about Domain Two A, which is our student growth domain, 92% of our campuses increased their score in Domain Two A from CA Two to the benchmark. So it does show there is a progression. So, it does show there is a progression with our students, and so, we're certainly proud to celebrate some of that growth. Sixty-three percent of our campuses achieved a domain scale, two A skill score of sixty or higher, again, just undergirding the importance of us focusing on growing every single student from their baseline to what, what we are, where we aspire them to be at the end of the year. Almost eighty percent of our campuses that achieved an increase in their domain two A score, seventy-nine percent of them, I'm sorry, also achieved an increase, excuse me, in their overall skill score. So, again, seeing that correlation between if you are increasing student growth in two A, your overall score also showed a nice increase. Almost half of our campuses increased their overall skill score by one letter grade. So, from CA two to the benchmark, almost half went up a letter grade. So, again, just seeing the steady growth, and so, we certainly celebrate those growth opportunities. And the last one is for domain two A, that was utilized in sixty-five percent of the campuses. So, again, when you have the greater of the two, or the greater of the three, you're looking at which one of those gives you the most bang for your buck, and we certainly leveraged domain two A for, for sixty-five percent of our campuses. So, just thought we'd talk just briefly about, about some of the items that contributed to the growth that we've seen. Again, we know that we've not arrived, we still have a lot of work to do, but it's important that we do celebrate some practices that are working very well on campuses, because our teachers are working really hard to make sure our kids are growing. And so, some campus practices that have really, that we're elevating for you this evening is really looking at student work samples, weekly examination of those student work samples through our DDI practices. We've talked about data-driven instruction for several years with you as a board, and so, we're really digging a lot deeper into those practices to make sure that we're able to elevate those standards that we need a lot more support in, and making sure we're focusing on students' work to make sure that they're growing in the capacity we need them to. The second one is student goal-setting and growth. So, this year, a really concerted effort to make sure students are also goal-setting, so they also are owning their growth and their learning and the process. And so, that has been a consistent monitoring practice for many of our campuses this year. Focusing on lesson alignment, one of our best practices we focused on is standards alignment, and so, ensuring that what we're providing to our students in terms of activities are aligned to the standard, and having teacher exemplars as well, and then our aggressive monitoring, which is happening in many of our campuses, specifically our strategic support network schools. And so, really having a way for teachers to be able to aggressively monitor actively where our kids are, where there are opportunity gaps for them, and helping them get to the next level. And then, really honing in our intervention blocks, and making sure those intervention blocks are strategic, and that we're really leaning into where the students need the most help. And so, those are a few items we've elevated, of course, a lot more depending on campuses, but just wanted to share a few things that we believe are contributing to the growth so far. So, as we think about responding to the data, there's really kind of in three different parts, and one is to assess the current reality. So, we have our benchmark data, we have individual, drilled-down individual student performance data, and so, it was really important for the campus teams to review that data as soon as they got it, to look at where are the students growing, who earned a point as relates to growth, where are the kids who are struggling, and what standards are they still struggling with, and how can we put them in the smallest group possible to help them get over the, to get over the curve? And so, to help them master that objective. And then, the other part of that, not only looking at the campus data, the student data, is then identifying who the staff is who will be able to provide targeted support. We know the window from CA two to benchmark is not a long window, so we're trying to basically use all hands-on-deck approach at the campuses to really try to provide as many interventions as possible to our students. So, all of our campuses have created a STAR-targeted plan, really just an action plan in partnership with a leadership team. So, the principals had a work session initially to look at their data with their executive director, with their peers, fellow principals, and really start thinking about how could this plan be rolled out at the campus. It was important for us, the principals owned that process, and they were able to design the plan that made sense for their campus, based on their student data and input from their leadership team as well. And so, that leadership team then developed those intervention plans based on student growth and based on the student needs. And the last part of that is making sure that the campuses, the teachers, and the teams are conductive, are conducting frequent formative assessments, just really quick checks to be able to assess mastery for those students. The last part of this plan is monitor and adjust, again, a very short window. So, we're monitoring and adjusting and doing formative assessments on a frequent basis. And so, one thing is very important for us is clearing the path as needed to make sure that we're able to monitor student outcomes, that principals and leadership teams have the support they need to be able to focus solely on that work with their teachers. And then, ED weekly check-ins, making sure our central office teams are out there visiting campus principals, and ensuring they have the support they need as we really try to inch a lot closer and faster to the finish line before STAR. So, that's just a brief snippet of our campus response to the data, and we'll take any questions you have.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lopez, Dr. Wertz, and Dr. Brown. We do have some questions, Mrs. McMurro.
Now, it's question time. Thank you all so much. I did have a couple of questions. I really do appreciate you guys breaking the data reports into sub pops, and it spurred a question. I don't know if you have this rough number on hand, but I'm curious to know, at this point in time, what percentage of our students across the board are receiving special education services? If anyone?
Dr. Wertz, at about eleven percent.
Okay. And, you know, I just really encourage our, our parents of students receiving sped services. When you have an ARD meeting for your child, you know, our, our students, part of their IEPs are to get accommodations when they take these standardized tests, whether it's a benchmark, whether it's the actual STAR. And we want to pull out all the stops for our students to be successful. And especially with the STAR changing and with, you know, the digital platform approaching, to me, in my eyes, as a parent of a student receiving special ed services who will be in third grade next year taking STAR, it's so important to ask questions. Ask and know what's already in place for your child. Ask them how it's going. Ask your child's teacher how it's going, because I think that sometimes it just comes down to their testing environment, and we're talking about eleven percent of our students that we know are capable. And since students on an IEP can get those accommodations, and it's a document that follows them throughout their journey as a student, I just think that's a really important way to advocate for your child, and for teachers, for your students receiving those services. My biggest celebration overall is that ninety-two percent of our campuses saw an increase in academic growth. That's huge, that's just huge. And I know that our benchmark is highly predictive, as Dr. Lopez mentioned, of, of performance on STAR. But if you really look at the timeline, you know, elementary, for example, their, their benchmark window was March first through third, and the actual STAR assessment will be the first week of May. Well, that's eight weeks of instruction. So, that's two months in which the data that teachers glean from this assessment can drive their instruction. And I know it's pros and cons for giving an early benchmark. Some of the cons are, it might not be the data that the teacher or the administrator was wanting, right? And a lot of the pressure that we feel as educators is self-imposed, because we want the best for, for each of our kids. But the pro is, knowledge is power. You know what, what the heavy hitter standards are, you know how each individual student is doing, and I know that our teachers and administrators and teaching assistants are working so hard. And that ninety-two percent, that, to me, that's huge. So, I just appreciate every single educator out there, and everyone who's supporting those educators as we move our students. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McMurro, Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you, President Mays, and thank you, Dr. Brown. It sounds like we're pulling out all the stops. And as Ms. McMurro, at least for the elementary, there is plenty of time between when this benchmark occurred to when the STAR actually hits, that we can see the fruits of all this effort in terms of providing the interventions that are needed to, to get us to our targets. So, on the slide where, where you talked about what contributed to the growth, you talked, you know, you've got a lot of things going on in terms of strategies here. What are we doing to, you know, you and your team doing to spot-check in individual classrooms or with individual teams to see that these kind of things are being done with fidelity and are actually being effective?
That's a great question. So, our executive directors with our new structure, they have a limited number of campuses. They have between ten and thirteen campuses. And so, their job primarily is to walk the campus with the leadership teams, observe classroom instruction, they peek into PLCs to see the cycle of the planning in the classroom PLC, to what's happening in the actual classroom. And again, I won't say this is happening in every single classroom or PLC across the district, but we are elevating these as practices. We're seeing a lot more of those campuses that have significant growth. So, I would say walkthroughs, PLC observations, and we do that at the, at the district level as well.
That's good news, that's good news. So, with that, no further questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Dr. Reich.
Thank you, President Mays. I'm glad we're on this slide. Tell me what student goal-setting looks like.
Yeah, so, that's fun. So, basically, we share, the students are able to see where they're, where, where they performed last year on the STAR, for example. And then, we look at the growth measure to be able to see what do you need to achieve an actual full point? So, where do you need to go to be able to get a full point? What's your skill score? How many more questions do you need? And so, then, basically, the student sets a goal with the teacher for the end of the year. So, after every assessment, the teacher and the student, they check that goal together to see how are you progressing? And so, it just really helps the kid be more involved in owning their work, in owning goals they have. But it's all specifically set around for STAR grades, STAR-tested around the STAR performance.
Gotcha. And is that, is that employed system-wide? I mean, are all kids that are looking at STAR alignment, are they, are all kids doing that, that are affected by STAR?
No, I will not say that's happening in every campus across the district. That is something that we're moving towards, and so, we saw a larger increase this year in students who are engaged in goal-setting. But it's certainly a best practice, and so, we want to see more of that at our campuses.
Yeah, I'm intrigued by that. Years ago, if not a, a good decade ago, we were, some of us, I guess just Mr. Hogg and myself now, involved with HEB and, and what they were doing. And they were, they, they considered the, the data packets that children had from K-12 was a game changer for them, and those data packets included goals and where they were at, and, and they assessed that all the time. So, I'm, I've always, I, I had positive and negative thoughts about that then, depends on, on the delivery and the culture, but that's just very intriguing to me. It's, I mean, they swore by it as far as their achievement scores. And I don't know, I mean, it sounds like it's in the beginning phases here, but this, it might be something where a formalized true culture change could produce things, just like you said, best practices. It would, it would be nice to model that, because we are Arlington ISD.
That's right.
That's all I have, I think. We're, we'll see what STAR results are, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you, President Mays, and I, I did have one more question. So, yeah, I know we've implemented a lot of strategies in our campus improvement plans and district improvement plans. When, looking at the growth that we've had, have we been able to look at certain process measures to see which ones of those strategies have worked? For instance, I'll throw one out. I, I think we've contracted with Region 11 for some of the formative assessment best practices, which I assume would, talk about that goal-setting for the students in an overall formative assessment strategy. So, you know, that's my question is, you know, have we done any specific measures to see if strategies like that are paying off, or which ones have been most effective in terms of this growth that we've seen between the CA and the benchmark?
Well, I can speak, I don't know if anyone else wants to speak, okay, I can speak for just a little bit about that. I know that Dr. Wertz did talk about, you know, the importance of going back and look at our resources and our strategy to make sure that we're getting return on investment. Our work with Region 11 and LFA, we cannot say specifically the lesson alignment, formative assessment, that we can't, we can say we're seeing growth, significant growth in those campuses, but have we done anything of formalized kind of process? No.
Wait, back up, so, we are seeing significant growth in those specific campuses?
Yes. And those campuses are mostly the strategic support network schools. And of those SSN schools, from the CA two to the benchmark, twelve out of the thirteen showed growth. Four of them went up an entire letter grade, and these are the thirteen schools who are the most, I guess, adhering mostly to those practices. And then, we're looking to expand that even next year to include more schools.
I'd, I'd heard a lot of anecdotal evidence that that specifically was something that seemed to be working exceptionally well, and I'm, and I'm glad that you guys are seeing that, and not just from the, the few people that have gave me that feedback, but from system-wide. So, that's encouraging.
Yes.
So, and that's what I think we, as a board, need to hear more of, is those individual process measures that we're doing to measure the effectiveness of all these strategies that we've talked about for so long, and double down on the ones that are definitely, we show a strong correlation between payoff in terms of student outcomes.
Absolutely. Could you want to add anything to that? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. I don't see anyone else with questions. I just want to point out once again, thank you, Dr. Lopez, Dr. Wertz, and Dr. Brown. You know, nothing is perfect, and we know that there's work to do. But what's encouraging is you can do that one step at a time, and I think we definitely see movement, and that's positive. Thank you for all of the hard work that you're doing to make sure that things that are being done right and being proven to be done right are then being shared for other campuses, for other individuals who are implementing those practices and doing it well, to share that with others. Thank you very much for doing that. But once again, thank y'all very much for making sure that we continue to push on, although we know there's many of opportunities where we can say, well, it's just going to be that way because of, and y'all are skipping over the of, and making sure that, that it happens. So, once again, thank you very much for the presentation, and keep on keeping on. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is open forum for non-agenda items. Pull up my script. Just give me one moment. Okay, so, we've come to the part of our agenda for our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters for, to speak on behalf of non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am, we had two registered speakers for non-agenda items.
Okay. Okay, so, when I call your name, it appears they're both here in person. If you would please come to the stand and speak. Once again, you'll have two minutes. Once the two minutes is up, Ms. Benjamin will alert you, and please stop at that time. So, the first name I have is Bonnie Allen. Is Bonnie, Bonnie Allen present? Did Bonnie happen to call in? Nope, okay. The next name is Dee Neville's. Is Dee Neville's present? Did Dee Neville's happen to call in? Okay. All right, so, there's no one to address our open forum for non-agenda items, so then we will move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Cavasas?
Thank you, President Mays, and I'd like to share some information about our school district. So, as you know by now, you should know, because it was covered by every media station in DFW, we launched our full STEM Ahead pre-K registration for this fall. When we did our big media event last month at McNutt Elementary, we had an actual cardboard train at the event, because it's full STEM Ahead. Remember, we had this discussion already once. That train was made by students, I don't think we acknowledged them, but it was made by students at Gunn Junior High Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy. by students at Gunn Junior High Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy. And I want to thank the students for their hard work and our teacher Todd Russell for overseeing the project. Some of you had a lot of fun in that train. Uh just in case you didn't know, uh that's who made the train, and the students put a green alligator, because of course it's gun gators, uh to make sure you you knew who it came from. It it might have frightened a little bit the pre-katers, but the adults seemed to love it, and you got the connection, so I want to thank them sincerely because that was a project that I think Anita asked, and they did very quickly. Congratulations to the seven U S T C U community scholars from Sam Houston High School. These students were honored Monday morning with a clapout through the school and breakfast in the main office. The seven students you see, yeah, seven students you see, earned scholarships valued at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from T C U includes tuition, housing, as well as a chance to study abroad. T C U gives out fifty of these scholarships annually, and no school had more than the seven that Sam Houston had. Takes a lot to make this happen year after year from students and teachers and counselors and families, and I want to thank everyone, T C U especially, but thank all the families that these students represent. It's a huge accomplishment and will sincerely change their lives. Speaking of congratulations, kind of hard to know where to start on this one, but um everyone at the Dan Diaper and Career Tech Center will appreciate this. I'll start with barbecue, because who doesn't love barbecue, right? The Career Tech Center barbecue team, the smoking ferrets, we're gonna move right past that, qualified for the state championship by placing third last weekend in brisket, fifth in ribs, and fifth in beans. The team was sixth overall. Good luck to the Wildcat Robotics Team, which qualified for state competition this weekend from the Career Tech Center. And four of Teacher Jamal Harvey's Automotive Two students competed in the State Skills USA event last weekend, and they walked away with two state championships in welding and marine service technology. Great job, this is just a snippet, a very small snippet, of the success that's happening at the Career Tech Center. So congratulations to Ginger Pulse, to the principal there, and all the staff. Yesterday, we had the chance to go to the Kiwanis Woodrow Counts Teacher of the Year Luncheon, and I want to thank the Kiwanis again for honoring our hard work, uh for all our teachers that are dedicating uh this year, obviously, to uh the challenges that they faced. They were all invited to a lunch, they all were very happy. Uh the winners of the district-wide um elementary junior high and high school, Laura E. Banks from Martin High School, Dr. Michelle Leverett from Bailey Junior High, and Lindsay Henderson from Little Elementary, represent the top teachers in our district for those levels. Congratulations to them. Uh every year we get to hear these uh individuals that meet the standard uh speak, and their uh speeches this year were quite entertaining and uh long-lasting and a plug for advancement and all, we could, we heard all kinds of stuff, but it was it was outstanding. Yeah, big time. Uh if you've looked at our looped-in blog this week, you've noticed we are profiling assistant principals. That's because it's National Assistant Principals Week. I want to thank all our A Ps for the outstanding jobs they do on our campuses, and if that wasn't enough, it's also National Library Week, and I want to thank all our librarians for their tireless work supporting our students and staff every day. So thank you to our A Ps and our librarians, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do we have any other trustees with reports? Mr. Chappa.
Thank you, President Mays. I I just wanted to talk about an event that I went to last night, um and Mr. Hogg was there, and um you know, there's there's certain things that you mark milestones, recovery from COVID and things like that, and um I think this was really one of those events. It was the Jones Academy hosted a bingo night fundraiser uh in community event. Uh they sold out, the event became so large they moved it to Bob Duncan Center, and it was packed, and and that we had discussions uh a little bit today with some of the hosts on how many people turned uh turned up, and their guess was probably around five hundred people, kids and adults. And um I went for the silent auction, I didn't get any uh auction items, unfortunately, but it was just such a neat event to go in, and there, everybody was happy and together, and it was such an event on such a big scale, um and everybody was having fun. For me, I just wanted to to say something about it because I it, as I was walking through the crowd last night, I felt like this is a really special event that really, for me, sort of hit home the fact that we're getting back to normal um in the the scale of an event that we haven't seen in a while. So um with that, congratulations to the Jones P T A for putting that on, and and well done.
Thank you, Mr. Chappa. Mrs. McMurro?
Thank you, President Mays. Um recently, I was able to take a day off, um not just to attend our pre-K kickoff, um which was wonderful, um but also tour some of our facilities. And so I was able to visit uh Marymore Elementary, um the current Carter Junior High, um and then our transportation facilities here in Arlington I S D, and um I'm just very blown away and impressed with each and every um adult and student um that I interacted with on that day. Um I want to say a special thank you and give just a huge shout-out and um express my sincere appreciation to Principal Nathan Prang, Principal Lopez, and our Director of Transportation, Tim Collins. They exemplify um, you know, leading with heart, and um they do what they do every single day, as different as their roles are, they do what they do every day for kids, and I appreciate them taking time out of their super busy day um to show me around and to show off um all the great things going on. Um I also enjoyed being a guest reader at my son's school, J B Little Elementary. I was able to join Ms. Fowler, um and Mr. Hogg, and a lot of community leaders and um volunteers. Um and as Mr. Chappa mentioned, it's just a sign of, you know, we're getting a little bit closer to normal. Um every single classroom at J B Little was able to have their own guest reader, um and it was a morning of literacy, it was a morning of collaboration and um joy, and it was just really fun to take part in. So um shout-out to um the librarian, Ms. Jackson, and the principal, Beth Ann Woodard, for offering this, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McMurro. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Mays, and Ms. McMurro, thanks for the reminder a little. That was a great morning of reading. Um I always get a, you know, we've started to get to re- back to reading this year at multiple schools, and I sometimes forget how much we miss it because we get caught up in other things and that that is important to see. And it's always interesting when you tell them, you start talking to, this, my group was fourth graders just recently, questions you get from fourth graders is always very interesting. When you start explaining what a school board does, and it's always an interesting explanation. Um Mr. Chappa, thank you for that, thank you for attending last night, that was a, I I have a feeling a lot of our schools will start bingo nights after that last night because word starts spreading of the enjoyment and the fun and the excitement of of that happened. And then let me just spend a s- a special thank you to Dr. Cavassos. At my children's school, and every Wednesday, and I'm sporadic, I make it every now and then on Wednesday, I'm not some of the dedicated, dedicated dads. Um they open the doors for all the students to get out so that the teachers can either not have a meeting, they can come in maybe a few minutes later that day, or they have faculty meetings in the morning. And so Dr. Cavassos and I had a morning meeting scheduled, I said, I have a great idea, let's open doors and come over and help, and it was outstanding for him to be able to interact and see some of the families and talk with those, and so I just appreciate that time and uh energy, and you didn't have to do the dad dance last night, but next time we'll get you, thanks, Dr. Sue.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. I don't see any other lights. Um I I'm not going to repeat anything we did, I was able to attend many of those events, so I'm just going to leave it on this note. For all the recognition that we've given of our students, for the events that we've been able to ta- to attend, for the teachers that we've been able to acknowledge, um this is just a very short verbiage from one of my favorite artists, India Ari. And she said, in her song, she says, there's hope. She said, it doesn't cost a thing to smile, you don't have to pay to laugh, just better thank God for that, and that's enough, and that's what I see happening around in our community. With that being said, it is ten fifteen, and this meeting is adjourned.